Good evening, everyone. I will call to order a regular meeting of the City Council of the City of Loma Linda. This is February 12, 2008. We have just finished a closed session, and now that Mr. Ziprick is seated, thank you for joining us, Mr. Ziprick.
Hi, Mr. Mayor.
Well, ask for the roll call.
Councilman Ziprick?
Present.
Councilman Peterson?
Present.
Councilman Riggsby?
Here.
Mayor Pretemperie Brower?
Here.
Mayor Christman?
Present.
All present.
Thank you. We have just finished a closed session for both city and redevelopment agency issues. And, Mr. Ziprick, with your permission, I will ask the city attorney to also make comments on those issues.
Please do.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. On the city council agenda items, item one was a conference with labor negotiator, meet and confer process. There's nothing to report on that at this time. Item number two was conference with legal counsel on two litigation matters as listed on the agenda. In those matters, direction and report was given, but no action to report at this time. On the redevelopment agenda, item 1A and 1B were real property matters where direction was given to the cities and agencies negotiating representatives, but there's no final action to report.
Thank you. I have asked Dr. Rue McKenzie to have our invocation this evening, and if you'll come forward, and when he is finished, I will lead in the Pledge of Allegiance. Please stand.
Oh, God, we thank you for the privilege of living in this free land, this country to which we have pledged our allegiance, not only just to the flag, but to the values that it holds. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. We ask for wisdom now, as the city council meets, to deliberate, as they work on issues that will make our community a better place. Give them wisdom, give them good information, so that their decision-making will advance the cause of this community. We thank you. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I should have mentioned, Dr. McKenzie is the principal of Loma Linda Academy. Mr. City Manager, any items be added or deleted?
None to be added or deleted, Mayor, but we would ask under item H if you would take item number seven right after item number three.
Okay, we can do that. This is a time for any comments from the public on any items not on the agenda. If the item is on the agenda, we ask that you wait until we come to that particular item. Does anyone wish to speak on any items not on the agenda? Please come forward, sir.
Thank you. My name is Michael Townsend. I have property at 25493 Van Leuven Street in Loma Linda. I come with an observation and a request. My observation is the speeding traffic on Van Leuven, cars going well beyond the speed limit. And I know that there has been a stop sign placed on that street already, and I'm asking if another could be placed at the intersection of Curtis and Van Leuven, and ask that the council would direct staff to do the appropriate studies or whatever the process is to get a stop sign there. And if I may help by distributing material or getting signatures on a petition or whatever is necessary, then I'll ask for your direction on that as well.
Thank you, sir. I think that's a good comment.
That kind of, can you attend on a Thursday evening, the Traffic Safety Committee?
I will.
Because that kind of issue would be taken up by that committee. We can get you the timing in the agenda.
Okay, thank you.
If I could just ask you one question also.
Yes, sir.
Is the issue more of the speed, or is it the difficulty of people getting out on Curtis?
I'm sorry.
Or is it, is it more of the speed, or is it more access of people trying to get on Van Leuven from Curtis?
It's really both. I've been outdoors in front of my property, which is at the intersection, at all hours, and I've noticed even at nighttime, it seems like cars are using that as a, they're not racing, you know, two vehicles racing, but they're, a single car is passing on that street at racing speeds.
Thanks.
Yeah, I've seen a lot of little roadsters, little hot rods.
Thanks. Obviously, as Councilman Riggsby suggested, if you can go to the committee, that would be.
Yeah, I have noticed also that there's a Redlands School District bus that stops every day about 50 to 75 feet north of Van Leuven on Curtis. It's a regular bus stop.
Thanks.
Floyd?
I do come out that intersection every day on several occasions, because I live down there. And coming out from Curtis onto Van Leuven, if I want to turn right, the visibility looking left is not really good.
I agree.
There, that is, that is a problem. And I will humbly apologize, I have been caught myself by the police speeding on Van Leuven once. I apologize for that.
Did you, how much was the ticket, Floyd?
Um, I've forgotten exactly what happened there. But.
Sir, if you could leave your contact information with the Public Works Director, we'll get ahold of you when the next Traffic Advisory Committee meeting is.
Yes, sir.
Have you noticed Floyd's blue pickup speeding on that street?
You know, I wasn't sure if that was his or not.
We will give you the license plate number.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments from people on items not on the agenda? Seeing none, we will proceed. Conflicts of interest, everybody can deal with their own on that, and we will go to item three, which is a presentation by Kimberly Epps from the County Probation Division. Is she here?
Yes.
Good, thank you. This is an item that I spoke briefly to the council about last meeting, and this is very specifically, if I can introduce the item, to ask that the City of Loma Linda be involved, probably in a financial way, to help with the gangs and drugs task force for the Victoria School, which is outside of our city limits but serves a lot of children from Loma Linda, kind of a unique school, because it's in the Redlands Unified School District, but it's in the city limits of San Bernardino, and it serves children from Loma Linda. And we have a similar program that we are working with the Sheriff's Department at the Brenner School. It's a good program, and I have talked to Mayor Pat Morris about this, and we want to hear your presentation and see what we can do to help. Thank you for coming.
Thank you, Mayor Christman. A little bit about the program. In 2001, the countywide gangs and drugs task force sponsored a community-wide assessment. As part of that three-year assessment, there was a survey issued to several communities in the county, school districts, all middle schools, a sampling of elementary schools, all high schools, and various law enforcement agencies, community-based organizations, and faith-based organizations as well. Based on that survey, basically, we wanted to know what was the impact on the quality of life stemming from gang violence and gang issues. Based on that report, there was a countywide strategic plan on gangs developed based on the responses that was issued to the public in 2005. In response to that, the county's Law and Justice Group, as well as the San Bernardino County Board of Supervisors, looked at that report and recognized the need to address that gang issue in a comprehensive way, using a three-pronged approach, starting with suppression services, intervention, and prevention services. The County Board of Supervisors allocated collectively in excess of $40 million that went to the probation department, the district attorney's office, the public defender's office, and the San Bernardino County Sheriff's Department to develop comprehensive suppression and intervention programs. One of the flagship programs developed in the county of San Bernardino was the gang resistance education and training model, which offers two approaches, the first being a core program that's provided in middle schools, that's a 13-week intervention program for students, and a nine-week class that's available to elementary school students. In addition to that, we also provide a great summer program and a great families model. To date, the probation department, the county, funds through general funds, three probation officers that are available to teach those services throughout the county. In the City of San Bernardino, the probation department applied for and received a grant three years ago from the Bureau of Justice Assistance, and will be on our third year of that grant to partner with San Bernardino City Unified School District to have one additional officer solely dedicated to that district, which is the fourth-largest school district in the state of California, and had some of the highest needs identified around the issues of gangs. So that's where we've been. To date, throughout the county, we've provided services to more than 6,000 students. We did our initial summer program last year, providing summer services in conjunction, collaboration with the Boys and Girls Club of the Victor Valley, the Boys and Girls Club of San Bernardino, Ninth Street location, the Family YMCA of Rancho Cucamonga, and we were able to provide summer services, safe summer services, field trips, cooking classes with Mothers Against Drunk Driving included, fire department, various agencies, city, county, and state agencies that we partnered with, all at the expense of the county and what we funded under our grant. So that's basically been it. This is an evidence-based program that underwent an evaluation in 1995 under the University of Nebraska Omaha. This program was started in 1991 by the Phoenix Police Department and the Alcohol, Tobacco, Firearms, and Explosives Agency. Since its inception in 1991, great services are available in 48 states. Officers that provide instruction services have to complete a two-week mandatory training. You have to update your certification every year. There's a minimum number of classes that you have to teach. So that's just that in a nutshell, so any questions? I'm open to take those.
What can the City of Loma Linda do to help this program at that school?
We have the program, we recently started the program at Victoria Elementary. As everybody knows, we're constantly watching the news, and we're looking at all of the different things, property tax cuts, and all of these things that the county might be experiencing. We've been fortunate to be able to provide this program at general fund cost. Mayor Christman was kind enough to invite me here today to talk about the program. The one need that I see lacking is for us to be able to comprehensively continue to provide a summer program service. We need additional funding, if this is what, something that you wanted to consider to, towards the summer program, particularly to provide transportation for upcoming field trips. Last year, we went in at a cost of about $23,000 just to provide summer program services in the two regions that were not funded under our grant. We're talking providing all of the meals, providing transportation. Every time we go into a classroom, just in elementary for the sake of saying, we provide incentives every time we show up to students that are participating in that class. Every time we have a graduation ceremony, every kid gets a T-shirt, every kid gets a picture of their class, every kid gets a graduation ceremony. We don't just show up. There were some comparisons to like the DARE program, but it's very different. Our philosophy is that we identify at-risk schools. We might look at, what is your problem, high school? Then we look at what middle schools feed into that high school? Then we look at what elementary schools feed into that middle school? So we go there, and our thing is, we go into a school, and we will do the entire fourth grade for grade services, the entire fifth, or sixth, or seventh, or eighth grade, because our goal is to change the mindset, the philosophy of those students as they move as a cohort into their next grade. So once we go to the school, we don't just say, okay, we're done, we did the nine weeks, the 13 weeks. We go back, visit that school for Field Day, Career Day. We have contests, essay contests, field trips. So these are the things where we're lacking. We are part of it, on the chopping block. Do we need another position? No. The City of San Bernardino recently received an earmark, so they are going to fund one grade officer for two years. We did recently reapply for our Bureau of Justice Assistance grant, and we do have another position coming into our unit. Are we going to be able to sustain that? I don't know. But right now, the need would be summer services. My recommendation, since I'm being asked, to the City of Loma Linda would be whatever funding you want to allocate to that summer program, so that it can be used for safe summer programs, for those kids that are out of school, without structured activities and places to go, and those kids that do not have the funding to participate in a YMCA or a Boys and Girls Club or those summer activities, because we're able to come in, partner with that agency, and say, we have this available funding.
What percentage of the students at that school come from Loma Linda?
Actually, at Victoria, I am not sure. The reason that we chose Victoria is because the City of Colton, Colton Joint Unified School District, when I looked at the numbers, they were providing educational services to eight cities, Loma Linda being one of those cities. So our desire was to impact that school district, no matter what city that it was. So we just look comprehensively at that school district. What's the level of gang activity that we were seeing in certain areas? And Victoria was a school that we wanted to provide services to. We can certainly open it up to all youth. We would not have to limit it just to youth from Victoria Elementary. We open our summer program up to all community youth, whether they have completed the core grade, gang resistance education and training class or not. So we would advertise it to all city youth, and then comparatively, whatever that need is in that city, we would say, okay, we need five weeks here for their summer program.
Okay. Any questions? Okay. I appreciate your coming tonight. I'm not sure if we're ready to make an action, take an action now. We do have the CDBG grant situation coming up later this evening, so we may discuss it at that time.
Okay.
But thank you for coming.
Okay.
No, no questions?
And I will leave these. In addition to this, we do have a survey that was developed by an MSW. We do survey all of our students, a pre- and post-survey, so that we can make sure that the county's money, that the city's money, that the time that we're putting into this program is getting a benefit, and we are showing an in excess of 86% attitude change from our pre- and post-survey among our students. So I will leave these over there for you.
Mayor, just one, one question. If it were possible to come up with a idea, perhaps between now and the next meeting, of the number of students who attend that school from this city, that might give us, even if it's an approximation, that might give us something to, to look at? And I don't know if that's possible to do, you know, the full number of students there at the school, and then the number that are from our, our city.
We can ascertain that?
Okay, if you could work with our city on that, that would be interesting, as we try to look at that.
Okay, I will do that, and I'll also talk with the principal, but I want to say, it's always nice to be invited or asked about funding, but the reality is, even if it's not, we will continue to provide services to Victoria Elementary and students at that school, because our goal is to address that risk. So either way, there will still be services.
Understood.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Thanks.
Okay, we've had a request to move item seven. Next on the agenda, community development, please. And this is a public hearing.
Members of the City Council, good evening. The item that we have before us is for the northwest corner of Redlands Boulevard and Mountain View. There are three applications that we're going to discuss this evening, as indicated on As stated, the corner property have provided some of the photos of what's there now in its existing condition. This is the home on Sun Avenue, just west of the corner of Sun at Mountain View. The project overview, as previously stated, there's three applications before us this evening. The A CUP is required for the drive-through restaurant that is, that is proposed as building C. I'll go into that on the site plan. That is a requirement of the East Valley Corridor specific plan. I provided the details of the proposed retail commercial development that is proposed for the entire project site. And the last component is a variance requirement for relief from the East Valley Corridor specific plan, which is related to building height, excuse me, building setback, parking setbacks, and wall heights. As indicated, this is a site plan. This is Mountain View, Redlands Boulevard. The onsite circulation of the project is as follows, with one driveway coming in off of Redlands Boulevard, another one off of Sun Avenue, and then two on Redlands Boulevard. And as indicated on the last slide, three buildings, as indicated here, A, B. This is the proposed site for the Fresh and Easy Market, and then C is the drive-through restaurant, as indicated, with the drive-through lane. We've provided you in the staff report as well, some colored elevations. This is building A, which would be on the west side of the property. This is the Fresh and Easy elevation, as indicated. We've, in the staff report, we've provided to you some of the descriptions as far as the architectural details for each of the buildings. This is building C for the drive-through restaurant. Again, the variance, as far as analyzing the project, one of the requests for the variance is for the reduced setbacks on building A and B. This would allow the building A and B to come closer to Redlands Boulevard. I will show that to you in the next slide. There is a difference in grade. There is a request for a block wall on the west elevation that exceeds the maximum allowable height. There's a difference in grade. There's, the architecture, as indicated, is of a modern contemporary design, and I go into detail as to some of the information that ties all the buildings together. I'm using the landscape plan, as indicated, with the request for variance relief. Building A and building B are closer to the Redlands Boulevard frontage. There is the landscaping that is provided here along the front that offers a buffer and kind of softens the visual appearance for the prime corner there at Redlands and Mountain View. One of the other requests is for the parking setback. We go into further detail in the Planning Commission's staff report, but with the request for relief for this requirement, they are able to provide a sufficient amount of parking, as well as the minimum drive aisle requirements. And in summary, this is a permitted commercial development and a commercial land use designation. As indicated, we have the three applications before you this evening. One other request that I would like to bring to the attention of the City Council, as indicated in the Planning Commission's staff report, is to receive the direction from City Council to direct staff to provide planning, a PCN letter, which is a public convenience and necessity letter. That was an issue that was addressed at the Planning Commission meeting on January the 23rd, and that is one of the requirements for ABC for the Fresh and Easy building that is proposed as part of building B. Staff is available for questions, as is the applicant and their representatives.
I didn't understand why that letter was necessary or that condition.
There is, ABC has a requirement, when you submit for off-site sales of beer and wine in the census tract, if there's an over-concentration of liquor licenses, that the lead agency, being the city, would need to provide a letter indicating that there is a public convenience and necessity benefit for consumers. We go into detail in the staff report, but keep in mind, too, that the census boundary overlaps with the City of San Bernardino, between Mountain View to the east, Waterman to the north, and Redlands Boulevard would be the southern boundary. So there's more on the north side of the freeway, and there's none on the south side in the City of Loma Linda.
And it is appropriate zoning for the beer and wine license?
Yeah, Mayor Christman, yes, sir, it is.
We wouldn't make any changes to any zoning to do that?
No, sir.
Okay, thank you.
It meets the square footage minimums. We have a minimum of 15,000.
15,000 for the specific plan.
Okay, thank you.
And the alcohol license request is for beer and wine only.
Beer and wine only.
Okay.
Offsite.
Any questions of staff?
Giann, were you gonna, did you want to approach? Why don't you tell the council about the?
We have not opened the public hearing yet.
No, he said developer.
That lady in the back was raising her hand. I will get to you, ma'am, but at this stage, we're just hearing from the applicants. So I'll get to you in just a minute.
I'd like the developer to tell you about the green building that they're going to do.
Yes, good afternoon. My name is Gian Torkin from Michael Real Estate Group. Fresh and Easy Tesco has been working with us and has made a decision to make this into a LEED-certified green building. We're working with them to make the project and the site, as well as the Tesco building, a LEED-certified green building. That decision was, was made a few weeks ago, and we're currently working on plans to make those changes to, to a green building.
And it'll be the first one in the United States?
It'll be the first one for Tesco in the United States, the second one for our firm.
And exactly what does that mean, it will be a green building?
It.
Talk a little louder, because you're.
Pull the mic a little bit.
Get the microphone a little closer for you.
LEED is the Leader in Energy and Efficiency Design. It's a federal standard that's used to determine whether a building has met certain requirements for energy efficiency, environmentally friendly. It includes reduction of energy usage, includes recycling of building materials, and reduction of water usage, in addition to other environmentally friendly initiatives.
Okay, thank you. Any questions? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Does the applicant have any more comments? Okay, thank you. I will open the public hearing at this stage. Public hearing is open, and I have three requests to speak on this issue. Sylvia Carlin, and after that, last name is Gutierrez, and I couldn't quite read the first name, and after that, Dick Wiley. Welcome.
Welcome. Good evening, gentlemen and ladies. Our property is on.
Identify yourself, please.
Oh, my name is Sylvia Carlin, and a property owner on Sun Avenue.
Okay.
And what I've been hearing, and my concerns are tonight, is that I just saw the map and how things are laid out, and my concern is that on Sun Avenue, you're going to have a drive-through that's going to be affecting the residents who are there now and the market. And my concerns are the traffic impediment there for the senior citizens and the families that live there. And to me, that would only, there's already congestion there, as we all know, so to me, that would be an additional infringement on the residents there. And that, to me, can create problems, more problems than what it's already at the present time. Also, I'm concerned about the park. I understand there's going to be a park, and that can increase vagrances and crimes. Right now, as it stands, it's. Right now, as it stands, it's been several years that there has been some vagrancy concerns in the neighborhood with that house that's vacant there on Sun Avenue. So with a park, although I enjoy parks, and they're beautiful, who's going to oversee? Is there going to be like a security night shift or something that would overlook that area? Because there are teenagers in that area. And to me, that would only encourage additional crimes otherwise. And also, I'm concerned also with that market and that drive-through because there's a bus stop there. There's children that come and go there in the morning and in the afternoon. And so where are we going to move, is the bus stop going to be moved? Because according to that figure that I just saw, that drive-through is right there where the bus stop is. So I'm kind of concerned about the layout of how everything is laid out there. And especially, like I'm saying, the drive-through and the market with the wine and all that, the liquor license, because that brings in, again, more trafficking of people, adults who want beer and wine. And you've got children in that residential area. And also, you've got the seniors there that, some of them have medical concerns that are serious concerns. So my concern there for that area is all that impediment that's going to be brought upon them. And with this layout, I'm really concerned about that market and that drive-through right there on Sun Avenue.
Okay, thank you. Any questions of the speaker? Thank you, ma'am.
Oh, also, is there a chance of getting a map, a copy of that map?
It will be a public record, yes.
Okay, Quinn.
Do we have some extras right now? We'll get one for you. I think we have some available right now.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Priscilla Gutierrez, and we've been through this already, I think, once before. And so this is like a second time. And I really want to get the neighbors, they're all senior citizens. So I really want to bring enough information to them. A lot of them probably can't be here because of health reasons and other things that pertain to their health and their age and everything else. So I really want to be fair with them. I really want them to be knowledgeable on what's going to happen there, because I don't think they know all this. And my mailing address was wrong, so I never got anything. And I finally had to call in and say what's going on there. And my main concern was that house, is there any date that that's going to be demolished? I heard it was condemned, so that's one of the issues I have, too. The other thing is, what is a Fresh and Easy? I've never heard of that. Also, the drive-through, okay, is that a 24-hour drive-through? And are we putting up a wall on which side? I don't understand. Are we putting it on the north side, which would be along Sun Avenue? Are we putting it, where are we putting that wall?
I'll let the planning department answer that question when you're through with all your questions.
Okay. The other thing is, what is going to be done with that well that I think used to service San Bernardino and Redlands and Loma Linda? Is that going to be just taken out, ripped out? Or has that been, has that been an issue before? And will there be an issue again? If it is, I'd like to know about it, so I can take that information back to the residents that live there. But this is a very small community there, and they're all senior citizens. So we all have, you know, there's also, this phase, I guess, is just for the, is it the preliminary type of, or do they have all the permits already, or is this a done thing?
That's what this hearing is about tonight.
Oh, okay. Yes, the traffic's always been an issue. The other thing, too, before was with these businesses coming in, it's already a negative declaration area there. Now you're going to add on top of that all this other lighting and noise and everything else. But that Sun Avenue should not be accessible to the deliveries or to anyone. Because that Sun Avenue is very, very small. So are you going to make that bigger, or what's going to happen to that? That's a small street. It's just a tangent, really. And it's only one of two exits in that whole area. And we're talking at least, we're talking at least 20 houses, maybe a little bit more, that go in and out of there every single day. And these people are senior citizens. And when you're senior, you know, I'm getting there, I'm there. You need to go to the doctor, the hospital, okay? We've had accidents there already. So I'm not sure if the city's, you know, considering anything to accommodate these senior citizens. And it's not, well, fine, you know.
A question for you. Should we just leave it vacant land forever? I mean, I'm not sure.
How can we work together? That's what I would like to know. How can we work together so that these people aren't going to suffer the consequences?
My question still is, should it be vacant, just stay vacant land forever? Do we put some kind of structure there? Because that land's been vacant for quite a while now.
You're talking three additional buildings there, and quite large. And you're talking additional parking there, okay? And anybody knows, if you've ever lived there, which I have, 15 years, that it's horrendous getting in and out of there. And then the people that go in and out of those businesses right now don't care about traffic. They just zoom out of there. You put cameras, but so what? You don't put one over here, you know, along the, you're not seeing everything that happens before that light. And, you know, traffic is going to be a big thing there, it really is. Do I like progress? Of course, I like progress. But this is impeding, you're putting already stress, more stress, on people that are already, already stressed out. So we have to work together. I would like that. Because I want to see something. If you have to put a big old wall in front of whatever, and it doesn't look good, well, put a muriel or something. We've got to work together, because if we don't, what are you going to do with these people then? Are you going to, is the city going to go in and buy them out? Or is this going to be an eminent domain thing, or what? You know, that's been done. Is that your plan, or what is it? Okay, let's be honest, okay? Contractor, you know, hasn't said anything about, or anybody else has said, buy them out then and let them go live somewhere else then. I haven't heard any of that. But these people, it's very hard for them to relocate, very hard.
Okay. And eminent domain is when the government comes in and forcibly buys land?
Yes, sir.
I don't believe that's on the agenda for this evening.
Sam's company, talk to Sam's company over on Anderson.
Okay, any other questions?
Beyond that, okay? The parking setback, is that on the north side, or is that on the east? Where is that? I saw the parking, what do they mean by parking setback on that?
I'll ask him to answer those questions when he comes back up.
And then, you know, when it comes to the building also, we have to be, we should all be notified to let people know that it's coming, or whatever's coming, and close the windows or do something, because the dust in there is already horrendous, anyway. But at least they'll know. You know, they'll have a chance to do something, if anything. The other thing, too, is all this online? Can I get this all online, any of this?
The entire agenda is online.
Is it the Loma Linda, the one that I just got from, it is? Okay. That's, I'd like to know that. Okay, the, I think my sister already pointed out on the other things. I don't think I have enough information still. I feel like we haven't been given enough information. And if I haven't been given enough information, I'm sure the people down there weren't giving enough. And if there's people not here, it's probably because they either didn't know or they're too sick to come. But I want to go back with some information with these people and tell them this is what's coming, this is what's going to happen. Let me have your views on it. So I think we want a voice.
Well, that's what this hearing is about, ma'am. There's an entire packet of information here. And I will make sure that you get, it's about this thick. And I presume we have an extra one that we can give her.
Mr. Mayor, the agenda is posted the Thursday before council meeting. And after the agenda item, there is a word that says "report." And if they click on the report, they get everything that you get. They get the entire report that is being presented to the City Council.
Okay, thank you.
May I also suggest or invite the contractors? The last contractor came out and actually had a meeting with the neighbors there to tell them this is what's going to do, what this is we're going to do. And, you know, we can meet at a home, or we can meet anywhere, so they can see, they can see the maps, and they can see all this.
Okay. George, do you have a comment?
I think that would be useful, if we had some sort of a local meeting right down there with, in some home, and then discuss it.
Yeah, I'm going to go back and talk to them and see.
Okay. Thank you for your comments, ma'am.
All right. So who do I contact, or who's going to contact me, or what?
That gentleman right behind you.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. And before you answer, I'll take Dick Wiley's comment, or comments. Please come forward, Dick.
Mayor, City Council, Dick Wiley. If you look at the entrance and exit map that was up there, one of the concerns I had, and I mentioned at the Planning Commission meeting, and went out and checked it, that the crossing across from the north side to the eastbound lane, there is a bus stop along in there. And with the increase in traffic and the speed, you come out of there, and if you want to turn left and go east on Redlands Boulevard, it may be blocked until you get out far enough that either you create a traffic hazard or potential for accidents in there. I can see turning, going eastbound, turning in there, but I can't see coming out of there, going up Redlands Boulevard to the east.
There's an Omni-Trans bus stop, I believe it's Route 8. It's in this general vicinity. And then the other bus stop that they mentioned was for the Redlands Unified School District, which is right about here at Sun at Mountain View. Part of the notification process is to send the initial study to reviewing agencies. We did send one to Omni-Trans, but we have not heard back from them. I can't follow up with them on that.
Two other quick comments. Where the drive-through is, if you look at the radiuses, I know that Bravo's had a problem with the short turn. And you get some of these longer extended pickups. They were going up and over the curb and onto the lawn. And they finally had to widen it to what would be the north side of the, probably the outgoing, anyway. But in other words, so that ultimately we don't have to go in and redo that curve if it's wide enough to handle some of these bigger trucks. Also, if they could put a trash receptacle in the drive-through area just before you get there. I've seen a lot of restaurants, or several restaurants, I'll put it that way, that have done this. And they're fairly frequently used. People throw the trash in there instead of saying, well, go around the corner and throw it out somewhere else. It saves litter in the streets. So those are my comments. Appreciate it.
Does anyone else wish to speak to this issue? Okay, I will close the public hearing. Can you please respond?
Sure. It's a lot of information, I will do my very best. In regards to the first speaker, Ms. Carlin, regarding the concerns for the driveway here on Sun Avenue, I'd like to offer the City Council, one of the conditions of approval is condition number 47, which indicates the driveway exit at Sun Avenue shall be posted with a "right-out, exit-only traffic" sign. As far as delivery trucks, I'd probably have to defer to the applicant and their representatives. It doesn't appear possible, for example, on the site plan here, we show the large delivery truck. It wouldn't seem feasible nor possible for it to come in this way. That has not been established as to how delivery trucks will be servicing the property site. But it does not appear feasible or likely that it would come in on Sun Avenue. Some of the other questions in regards to Sylvia Gutierrez. We don't have a date for the demolition of the home on Sun Avenue. That has been vacant, I believe, since 2002. We've had lots of comments over the years about its condition. Now with the application that we've received from Mr. Torkin and his representatives, the proposal is for the demolition of that house and its replacement with the relocated Sun Park site. In regards to the wall height issue, the request for a block wall is here along the west elevation. This would be 10 feet, and this would be six feet along the rear, which would mimic which is already along the southern end. And then there would be a wall six feet in height in here as well. Keep in mind, too, there are existing walls, fences, on the backside of these properties on Sun Avenue. One of the other conditions indicates or directs the applicant to engage in discussion with the property owners for the relocate, for the replacement of those existing walls and fences. And so there's just one wall built on the property line belonging to this project site.
Well, you might also mention the requirement for landscaping, additional landscaping along the rear and west property lines.
Yes, ma'am. One of the other items addressed in the initial study is a mitigation measure for a tree buffer along the northern elevation, as indicated here. This is a revised landscape plan that indicates that. And along here, along the west elevation with the Mobile Home Park to the west. I believe that... I'm not sure if Mr. Torkin has brought a representative from Fresh and Easy, but Fresh and Easy is the new retail format from Tesco, which I believe is the world's third-largest retailer. This is a new retail format that they're bringing out here in Southern California, Arizona, and Nevada. It's smaller than a full-scale supermarket and a little bit larger than a typical corner convenience store. We've provided a condition in your report in regards to hours of operation. Fresh and Easy is asking for eight to 10 for hours of operation. We don't have, the reason why we mention that is because there's an applicant that's tied with Building B. There is no applicant at this point for Building C and the drive-through restaurant. So there's no way for staff to respond to that question as far as there being a 24-hour drive-through. 24 hours of operation for something like that would require an amendment to the conditional use permit. And we, staff would evaluate that and bring that back to Planning Commission and I believe City Council for review, as well as public notification. In regards to the notification, state law requires that we notify property owners within 300 feet. The applicant has provided mailing labels with an affidavit from a title company certifying that they have the latest mailing labels for properties within 300 feet. And also, we notified all the properties within the Alta Comuna Mobile Home Park to the west as well. The comment made from Mr. Wiley in regards to the trash can, that is not something that we've addressed with the conditions of approval that have been provided. If I may bring to your attention, there is a trash dumpster for the benefit of Building C. But if that is an item that would like to be discussed further, we could bring, get the input of the applicant and his representatives, but possibly even conditioning for a trash can in the drive-through aisle. That is something that we've conditioned the remodel and renovation for the KFC on Redlands Boulevard, west of Anderson. I believe that is in response to all of the questions that have been asked.
There's a question about the well. The well, I believe, this speaker was referring to. The well is owned by the city of Loma Linda and is down by the freeway and will remain so.
Okay, let me add a couple of issues. Imminent domain was brought up. And just to clarify, imminent domain is not an issue here. We are not forcibly buying any land from anybody. That's not the intent, as I understand it. The word was used liquor. This would not have liquor sales, it would be beer and wine only. And there is a distinction. I do have a question concerning the height of the walls. Six feet doesn't seem high enough. If I were a neighbor on the other... Six feet doesn't seem high enough, if I were a neighbor on the other side. Why did we pick six feet?
That's the maximum allowable height. One of the attachments that we provided for you in the staff report is an attachment from the grading plan. It indicates that the height for some of the walls and fences on the north side of the project, which would be the south side of the properties on Sun Avenue, has a height of six feet. In regards to the one on the west, there's already an existing garden wall there, but because the property slopes down before it gets to the property line, they would need to build up this area in order to provide the path for Building A, and thus request a four-foot retaining wall with a six-foot garden wall on top.
I never heard that. Come on. And I'll ask that you make sure she gets an entire copy of the report, not just that she has to print it out, but if you can print it out and give it to her.
I gave him my copy, sir.
You did? Okay, thank you.
And, Mr. Mayor, if I might provide a little further history on this site, the Savon project was approved by the council and the planning commission several years ago. It's come back several times for extensions of time. The reason that we met with the neighborhood at that time was because that project proposed to change the zoning on the site, and the zoning was changed to commercial, and it also had a, at least for the commercial, the residential properties that it made a part of the site plan. The property itself towards Redlands Boulevard was already commercial. But we also changed the code at that time to allow alcohol sales in buildings fifteen thousand square feet or larger as an off-site approval. The Sun Avenue configuration was approved at that time. We have made every effort for that site plan, as well as for this one, to make sure that traffic will not go into the neighborhood, or at least we've tried to minimize it as much as possible. The neighborhood was rezoned or re-designated through the general plan process from residential to commercial in two thousand and six. So the neighborhood itself is actually a legal non-conforming neighborhood at this point. It is no longer a residential neighborhood in terms of the general plan, land use designation. And the concerns at that time were that it is kind of trapped between the freeway, Redlands Boulevard, Mountain View, and that it probably would be transitioning to commercial at some point in the future. Although I think at the time, the council and planning commission had anticipated that it would transition through the market, not through efforts of the city.
Thank you. Okay. And you had made the comment, Floyd, that maybe a neighborhood meeting would still be appropriate. And I'll leave that to the planning department. Okay. I have closed the public hearing. What's, Stan?
Make a few long-winded comments. Just a few-
Oh, you do. It seems a little hot in here.
No, it's cold. I'm cold.
Well, here. Can we, thanks. Okay, go ahead.
First of all, just some general comments. It's unfortunate, I guess, that we didn't have a specific presentation with Tesco, but definitely been some press coverage with their recent expansion that I think is really exciting. And for those that don't know, their emphasis is on freshly-prepared products that include a lot of individual meals and so forth. And I think that's a very positive thing for our community. And for some of us that have shopped in Tesco and tried to survive in London, it's, you know, been tremendous to shop in their stores there, and very impressed, only way you can survive with food prices in Great Britain, and I think it'll be excellent. In addition to that, they also, you know, have pledged to pay their employees better wages. I don't know if they're technically living wages in some of their competing businesses, so a lot of positives. I understand the neighborhood's opposition. I think, you know, suggestions have been made, and planning commission actions have helped address that. I'd like to point out some positives for the neighborhood. We'll take a vacant, eyesore lot, a boarded-up house, and make it into, I think, a relatively attractive site. I know the traffic is always gonna be an issue, and unfortunately, there's, I can understand that. But the other positive, especially for the senior citizens, if I lived there, I would love to be able to walk down the block and be able to get some of this food for my meals. I think that will be a real plus. It'd be a real plus for the community as well, for business development, sales tax, et cetera. The only other items I think we should add as conditions of approval would be to exclude delivery trucks from access or egress on Sun Street, and have that trash facility, as Mr. Wiley had mentioned, and I'd like to suggest those conditions are agreeable by the applicant.
Any other comments? Floyd?
Mr. Mayor, it might be just, I see a proposed lot there for a drive-through, and although that hasn't been spoken for yet, it's probably useful for this city to just remind themselves that what happened the last time we discussed a drive-through in this town resulted in we getting a new council member, that council member becoming the mayor, and that mayor maring the county supervisor. There's a lot of implications here when you talk about drive-throughs.
Leave it to you, Floyd, to bring that one up. Bob?
I was gonna say, my comments are down a little bit in terms of scope, but I agree with what Councilmember Brower has said. One thing I would agree with the suggestions that you just made, Stan. I think, I think the idea that Dick Wiley brought up is a good one in terms of the, trying to come up with a trash facility, control that, and I think the delivery restriction on Sun is a good idea. Also, one thing about it is, I've also heard favorable comments about this particular chain, and I think it will be an asset if some things are done in that sense to help protect the neighborhood. Having a source of very high-quality food in that area is good, because that part of town has not had access to something like that. And I think it'd be nice to have another market in town that serves another area. And that's considered one of the things that helps a neighborhood, is to have things like that close by where people can walk to them and easily access them. So those are my comments.
Thank you. Dusty?
Yeah, I have some questions of, I guess, planning, and it's about the square footage of the facility. It's somewhat clear that based on their proposed fixture plan, the prototype market is about fourteen thousand square feet, and they've upsized it by about a thousand in order to get a liquor license, and a beer and wine, beer and wine license. So they're at fifteen thousand seven. When I just look at the, at the breakdown of the space, their standard sales area for their prototype store is ten thousand two hundred forty-four square feet. And it says that the proposed building, and I don't know if the final square footage was the same, was also ten thousand two hundred forty-four. So they didn't increase the size of the sales area. And what it shows is a nineteen hundred square foot increase in other space. And the math doesn't all add up, but if you look at the backroom area, it should be roughly a third of the building, and it's not. So I'm wondering, is it actually fifteen thousand square feet? Does it exceed the threshold for beer and wine licenses? Somebody measured it out, because it just doesn't, things just don't add up from looking at it.
I guess I'll ask the planning department to come forward again.
In response to, I'll take Councilman Riggsby's question first. The amendment to the specific plan was for fifteen thousand square feet. That was something that was conveyed to the applicant at the onset and discussions with the city. And when we took in the submittal, we went off of the square footage of the building being fifteen thousand seven square feet, and thus going forward with the, that it complies with the requirement as indicated in the amendment to the specific plan from two thousand and two.
So there's been confirmation that the final design is that large?
I did not confirm the exact square footage, but that can be done.
The applicant has indicated that they will be building a building that is fifteen thousand seven square feet, yes, and it will be confirmed through the plan check process.
And if it's not, then the license would be in jeopardy?
Yes.
Okay.
If I may respond to Councilman Brower's comments, if the council would like to provide an additional condition of approval, perhaps the inclusion of possibly two trash cans in the drive-through lane, either one before the window or one after the window for the benefit of consumers for the future tenant in Building C. And-
May we, sorry, may we also ask the applicant whether it would be agreeable to add the condition of approval about the delivery on Sun Avenue or street?
Okay. One other, to tailgate, piggyback on that, one condition that we do indicate, I have to find that number real quick, but delivery hours for Fresh &amp; Easy would be per the city's noise standards of seven AM to ten PM. And I have to find the condition on that, but that's one of the conditions that's provided. I also want to respond to the comment as well as for the proposed Sun Avenue Park. That would be a city property, and then that would be maintained by our City Public Works Department as far as maintenance.
Mr. Typet should, I think, address that, because I believe that it will be maintained by the development, it will be a city park maintained by the development.
Okay. I think that answered everybody's questions. Thank you, sir.
No problem.
Okay, what's the pleasure of the council? And shall we ask the applicant to come forward to agree to some conditions here? Are you ready to make a motion? Okay, I'm gonna ask you to come forward. Are you representing? Do you have the authority to represent the company to agree to conditions?
Yes, I do.
Okay. Why don't you ask your question specifically?
The two conditions of approval I would like to add, I actually like the idea of one trash container in the drive-up and the second one in the drive-out area, so the two trash containers, as Raul mentioned, and number two, the restrictions on delivery trucks, excluding them from Sun Avenue.
That would be agreeable. In fact, our truck path was designed to come out of Mountain and won't be able to go through Sun in any case. We had thought about that in advance of the design.
Are those conditions acceptable?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you.
I will move the mitigated negative declaration with attachment one.
What's the conditions that you just mentioned?
I was gonna make that a second part of the motion, trying to keep the attorney happy, but whatever he prefers.
Is it okay if he does it in one motion, Mr. Attorney?
Yes, and I think staff asked that you add the approval of the letter to the ABC.
The what?
The letter to ABC.
Okay.
The PCN letter?
That will be part of my motion, and the CUPs, as mentioned, and those conditions that we just specified and agreed to by the applicant.
Okay.
I second it.
Any further discussion? On favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed. Unanimous. Thank you. Now, this is, will this be coming back to us? I need to go back to my-
There would be a final map? There would be a final map for the parcels?
Okay.
Should we make a separate action on the variance, or was the motion clear enough to include everything? Just want to make sure nothing got left out here.
Mr. Halliday?
I presume the motion included all the conditions of approval and findings set forth in the staff report as proposed.
Very good. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, sir.
No problem. Thank you.
Okay, we have, next item, we have Loma Linda Academy that has been waiting patiently here, so we'll skip over the joint meeting on the budget issues, and we'll go to item five on the agenda. And this is a public hearing, Council bill two thousand eight dash oh seven, approving the issuance of Colorado Educational and Cultural Facilities Authority revenue bonds in an aggregate amount principal of thirty-five million dollars. Does anyone from the staff wish to introduce this item, or shall we ask the applicant to come forward immediately?
Can I ask the city attorney if there are any recusal issues on this item?
Well, this is not an organization that's directly affiliated with Luask, where we have our typical conflicts. I'm not aware of anybody having a conflict due to source of income or employment with the academy or sponsoring-
So children attending doesn't count, is it?
It would not be a source of income, too. You would not have a financial interest in that regard.
You plan to put all three of them? I had several children go through that.
On the contrary, it's a source of a great drain of my income.
So it does affect your income.
It will affect his future retirement plans if his daughter's support-
And by great, I say it's a great deal as well.
In that case, I will ask Room McKenzie or his team to come forward and make a presentation. And welcome, folks. And I will go ahead and open the public hearing.
May I please the council? My name is Charles McKenstry. I'm general counsel for Southeastern California Conference of Seventh Avenue, where the borrowers in this situation. What we're here for this evening is approval of the local government entity where some of the construction occurs, Loma Linda Academy. You are not the issuer, the conduit issuer in this situation. You have no liability for the bonds, for any of the activities brought about by the bonds, but you are required by federal law to pass upon the project. And this is not a building permit. There aren't even plans drawn at this point. You're just giving your assent to the bond issuance for a project at Loma Linda Academy.
Thank you. Questions? Mr. Zepplin?
It's good to see you. Actually, Chuck and I went to law school at the same time, so we go back a few years, and we had a chance to talk earlier today, and I'll summarize briefly the discussion we had. As he knows, and a lot of us know, the Loma Linda Academy is located on Anderson Street, which is one of the more congested streets in the city. And I mentioned to him that we have a little matter that's referred to as Measure V, and there's some other planning issues that are right now kind of in question as to where they may go in the future. And I had asked to look at the prospectus, and I know it's being worked on, it's going to some institutional investors ultimately, and I think there's a letter of credit and a number of things. The only thing I had talked to Chuck about earlier today, if it's okay, if I could just summarize, was because there's some uncertainties in what might happen with the project down the line, because under Measure V, Loma Linda Academy is not exempt. And we don't know exactly what will happen. I know that there is some discussion that the academy will stay the same size. I know that there is some discussion that the academy will stay the same size. An actual traffic engineer will have to make the determination of whether there would be some mitigation required by the academy. My concern is to not have the bond community ever come back to the city saying there's an implication here or a contradiction by the city. So I asked Chuck if it's okay, would the issuer be willing to do an indemnity agreement to, only to the extent of this bond, the part we'd be approving tonight, which is very limited in scope? And I think the answer is...
The answer is yes, but it's the borrower, not the issuer.
I mean, the borrower. I'm sorry.
The borrower, Southeastern California Conference, is willing to sign an indemnity agreement with the city of Loma Linda for liability the city incurs arising out of this TEFRA vote.
And with that, that was my concern. It satisfied my concern. And so with that, making a long story short, that satisfies my concern.
Okay. Well, I will state, I also had the opportunity to talk to Mr. Rawson and Dr. McKenzie. My concern was that I didn't want there to be an implication that we were approving any building projects because I don't know if they will comply with Measure V. So we had some of the same concerns. And as long as our city attorney thinks that that indemnification would cover us, I just don't want any implication that we're also approving the building plans themselves here.
Right. Mr. Mayor, we did add to the resolution that's before you some language reflecting the fact that we're not making any representations or warranties or assurances regarding future approvals of any entitlements. And we did mention specifically that there are land use regulations, environmental laws, local initiatives, and state law that will have to be addressed in that approval process down the road.
Okay. Thank you.
And could that, you also work with the borrower on some language that would just provide that limited indemnity?
Yes, we can certainly do that.
With that, and by the way, that's not to imply to anyone listening or you folks that we're not overall supportive. I'm an alumnus of the school. I have the same concerns that we all do. We're all, we probably all have a, have a tie to the school. I have kids that have gone there. So one of the concerns is, we obviously are very pro-school. It's just there's some laws that may create implications that we'll have to work through at a future date. We just don't want the investment community, which is in Wall Street, to become upset at us without us having some protection.
And interpretations of laws.
Exactly. You and I agree on that, Councilmember Riggsby.
And I'll occasionally misinterpretations of laws. I just had to editorialize.
Councilmember Riggsby, you and I agree that we don't want any problems along that line. We just have to come to an agreement on how to get there.
Being a non-lawyer, have no...
The direct route being beyond your comprehension.
Being a non-lawyer, I have no interest in the legal implications, but I am just purely curious what you're hearing from your bond issuance authorities and so forth and underwriters. You know, we hear so much about the credit crisis right now and Warren Buffett and his involvement with various insurance activities related to muni bonds and other somewhat related debt instruments. Are you hearing that it's going to be difficult to get funding in this kind of environment? Or what are you hearing, just out of pure curiosity?
This bond is backed by a letter of credit bank, which is...
And just for the record, you are?
Oh, Tim Rawson.
Okay.
This backed, this bond is backed by a letter of credit bank, which puts itself on the line backing this bond issue. Their rating is what the public sees when they purchase the bond. And the agent, we haven't chosen a letter of credit bank yet, but when that happens, we look very carefully and make sure that they have a good credit rating so that these bonds can be sold quickly and easily.
Thank you. I will, any other questions of the applicant? I will quote Dr. McKenzie, please.
Rue McKenzie, Loma Linda Academy. Couple of questions with regards to Measure V that I seem not to be understanding.
Turn your phone.
I don't have Measure before me, but if you'd help to educate me, does Measure V prohibit replacing facilities? Is there prohibition against that? I am not sure.
I don't think we'd better answer that question. We'll let you ask our legal counsel that one separately.
All right. Well, obviously where I was going, the preliminary master plan is into the city with the specifications that they required. And we were careful to detail on that master plan what buildings we will demolish and what they will be replaced by. And that is the intent. Inasmuch as our academy enrollment has grown at an average of about two and a half to three percent over the last fifteen years, we cannot necessarily stop that. We are going to max out at some point, we believe. But that growth happens because more students come into the system. So the academy is not currently planning growth. Of course, as you know, Loma Linda is a relatively new city. And Loma Linda Academy has maybe some of the older buildings here. The buildings we are trying to replace are over sixty years old, not friendly, user-friendly. And there was a term that one of the planner used here earlier, we wish we could make them so that they are environmentally friendly and so on and so forth. So that's intent. But if I am directed to legal counsel to answer the question with the prohibition and replacement, I'd be happy to ask those questions.
There, those buildings were old when I was a student there and I graduated there
in nineteen sixty-nine. One of the minor concerns, and all of us who are interested in this moving forward have tried to understand what we can, and I understand there may be some time limits on the time you have to spend those funds and build the project.
Right.
And I believe it's about three years.
Yes.
That's correct.
And so one of the things that, if someone's watching or in the audience wondering why we're concerned, under any city that has a measure like Measure V, you can have challenges and issues in sorting it out. It's already been in effect over a year and we're still working on understanding parts of it. And as you can hear, that there's some room for discussion on what it means. So interpretation thereof. So one of the concerns is not to have the academy get caught in a time trap, where you say, we have got to have the project done, and yet you're caught on things that even the city council can't change. So we just want everybody forewarned that there may be some things we cannot speed up. We can't necessarily make it so you can immediately build because there's some studies and things. But at the same time, that doesn't mean we're not pro-school. It just means there are rules that we have to live with. And as long as everybody understands that and the investment community understands that we're not trying to be contradictory, we're okay then.
Yeah, understandable.
Okay.
Thank you.
Hey, thanks.
Okay, I will close the public hearing. And what's the pleasure of the council?
It's moved, I'll second...
With the additional indemnification.
Yes, absolutely. And the other things that have been, the wording that's been added by the legal counsel and the comments, obviously, that we've exchanged.
Okay, we have a motion and a second.
I just have to ask one question again, legal issues I don't have any interest in, but I'm puzzled why we are literally underlining by verbal language about the, you know, the liability, release, et cetera. To my knowledge, every bond that has come through for various entities that we quotes, use the city's authority, we have that language. So the city is never liable for a bond that ends up in default or other issues. So I guess I'm just a little puzzled why we're kind of waving the flag on this one. That language is there, as I understand it, anyway.
Well, I'll at least answer it from my perspective. In the other bond issues that come before the council, we have all the bond documents when it comes before us. In this case, they don't have the bond documents yet, and we want to make sure it is in there. That's one issue. The second issue is that I was concerned when I looked through the agenda packet at their timeline. And I wanted to make sure that if there was a delay as to timeline, that we weren't held responsible for those delays, especially if they couldn't be all spent within the three-year period, that these bond documents seem to have as their parameters for spending.
Not every, not every issue has a time limit on it, Stan, and this one does. And so one of the concerns, quite frankly, it doesn't invite anything, but what it does say is if there's an issue on that particular aspect, we have an understanding that we're covered. Now, it may be that, you know, there's a hearing next week, and we're all aware that on the twentieth, there's a hearing on the interpretation of at least the legality of Measure V in various parts of it. And I think we've all recognized there may be some effect on Measure V at that time. We don't know and we can't predict the future. So we were just trying, from my perspective, we're trying to be prudent. I'm just suggesting that as a way to allow us to move forward, approve the thing tonight without seeing the bond, the actual bond documents beyond an application, which I have looked at. Because I would like them to be able to move forward. And I, in talking with Chuck McKenzie earlier, he's comfortable with it. I'm comfortable with it, and it allows them to move forward, so.
My only response is, again, I would never vote for a bond that I wasn't assured by our legal counsel, that there was no liability to the city if something goes wrong, be it timing, be it the little men from Mars that land on Planet X and Earth, you know, that's, to me, an absolute condition for any time we give that stamp of approval. But just that, that perspective, that I think that just has to be there. I don't care what the issue is.
Okay. Any other comments? We do have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, no. Unanimous. Thank you for coming, gentlemen. We'll go back to item four on the agenda, which is a joint meeting with the city council and redevelopment agency. And if you will bring the redevelopment agency to order.
We'd like to call the redevelopment agency back into session.
Finance. Good evening, council, mayor and council members. We'd like to present the mid-year budget at this time. We did take this mid-year report to the budget committee on February sixth. They reviewed it and agreed with our recommendations. At this time, we're just presenting the review and our summary for the general fund, the city as a whole, which includes the general fund and the redevelopment agency. We will be requesting recommendations for changes to our revenues and expenditure appropriations. We did a chart here to show the changes between our adopted budget, which was the original budget, plus any adjustments that have occurred to date. And then we did a revise for the mid-year budget recommendations. For the general fund, we did start the year out with seven hundred and sixty-seven thousand dollars higher than we projected. This is a result of higher sales tax, property tax, interest earnings, and some engineering plan check and inspection revenues. We did have some savings in our community development expenditures last year, which contributed to this additional beginning fund balance. For our current revenues, we are asking a proposed decrease by a net of four hundred and thirteen thousand dollars. We are seeing some increases in property tax, some refunds and reimbursement due to state reimburse, state and federal reimbursement for some strike team activity. Our interest earnings are coming in higher and our motor vehicle and lieu are coming in higher. Unfortunately, we are seeing a decrease in our transfers in, which is special revenue funding that is given to us either by the state. And we are seeing some decreases in our red light citation income, which eventually gets transferred into the general fund. We are reducing our engineering inspection due to decrease in building activity, and we are reducing our sales tax projections. On the expenditure side, we are requesting additions of six hundred and forty-four thousand dollars. These increases will be ninety thousand for professional services for general plan update, housing element, and expert witness associated with the general plan. We will be adding a hundred and thirty-five thousand for legal fees, which is related to ongoing litigation. Fifty thousand for public works, plan check, and inspection services. And we are adding two hundred and eighty thousand for fire department. This increases the salaries, the strike team overtime, and contractual services. The salaries and contractual services are already city council approval, so this is just adding the dollars to the budget to cover those costs. The net effect on our ending balance is three hundred and seventy-eight thousand dollars for the general fund. This is our chart for the city as a whole. This includes the general fund and all other funds, not including the redevelopment agency. Again, this shows what we started the year and any changes we've added to the budget to date and what we project the year end to be. Our beginning balance is eleven thousand three hundred and fifty dollars less than we projected for the city overall. This includes the general fund adjustment that we just spoke of. Revenues are being reduced by one point one million dollars, which is a combination of the increases and decreases. This includes the general fund decrease. We are seeing reduction in development activity, which affects our development impact fees. And then we are seeing some reduction in special revenues, which are those items, some grants, some state-funded revenues that we get. We are currently requesting two point one million in increases. This is the general fund included. We are asking for four hundred and fifty thousand dollars for the sewer line up, upsizing on Redlands Boulevard. This will come out of development impact fees to increase our capacity on that line. We are asking for one point five million for property purchases for low mod housing. This comes out of the development agreement fund, which is when developers buy out of their low mod housing for new projects. And this will create a decrease of two point five million in the city overall. For the redevelopment agency, again, this is our chart showing the changes from the adopted budget to the revised mid-year budget. To the beginning balance, we actually saw a higher beginning balance of almost a million dollars, higher tax increment due to development, higher interest earnings due to some bond proceeds we still have available and sitting in the bank. Revenues are being increased by eight hundred and seventy-six thousand dollars due to higher interest earnings this year and due to a transfer in. For expenditures, we are only increasing by two hundred and forty-two thousand dollars. This is, again, additional legal fees that we need for ongoing litigation in the low mod housing fund, and then some debt service charges passed through from the county. These are based on a percentage of property tax, so we have a pass-through agreement with them for the San Bernardino County College. And we're also implementing an accounting change recommended by our auditors for the administrative fees. We used to net it out of the revenue, but now they want us to gross it up. Ending available cash balance, we are projecting over the whole year a seven point four million dollar decrease. And that's the presentation of our mid-year budget. We would like to recommend approval of the revenue changes in attachment one. And then we'd like to recommend approval of the additional expenditure appropriations in attachment two.
Thank you. Thank you.
Mayor, I'd point out too additionally that the increase for legal services is merely a guess at this point, and more than likely, we probably will have to come back to you before the end of the fiscal year.
Oh, I hate that. Okay, is there a motion?
I love it.
Second.
Any discussion?
Only quick comment, you know, we bemoan the fact that we have relatively little property tax money that comes into the city compared to some other cities, but I guess the good thing is when property tax challenges come along and some of that money goes down, we're probably in better shape than other cities.
That's a way to look on the bright side, Stan. Leave it to Stan. Okay, any further discussion? Any opposition? So ordered. Okay, we have quite a few people here waiting for item six very patiently. Sorry it's taken so long to get to it, but this is the Community Development Block, Block Grant Program with the prioritization schedule. And we have quite a few requests to speak here, and this is a public hearing, so I will go ahead and open the public hearing at this time, and I'll ask for the staff report first.
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor. Every year, the city receives an allocation from the county Community Development Grant, and this year, we receive an allocation of two, $142,154, of which $21,323 is for the Public Services Project. The city received 13 applications, total $254,155. So, we have a lot of people here tonight to present that case, so you can make a decision on who you want to award the, the fund to.
And it's gonna be...
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
If I understand correctly, the new, George Bush's new federal budget totally eliminates the Community Development Block grant money from the federal budget for next year.
This is something that started, I believe, during the Nixon administration, so it goes back a ways.
But that would not affect this, this year anyway, right?
And, and the Congress does not use the President's budget as a starting point.
That's true.
They throw it out.
So...
Okay, we have a lot of applicants here. I will ask you to keep your comments, the three minutes, otherwise we'll be here for quite a while. And I've got LeAnn Dreberg first, from Inland Temporary Homes. Welcome, LeAnn.
Wow, I get to go first. I never get to go first. Honorable Mayor and council members, I'm LeAnn Dreberg from Inland Temporary Homes. And I don't know if you all know or realize that this year will mark our 20th anniversary for being incorporated as a nonprofit agency here in Loma Linda. I want to take a moment to thank you that the city of Loma Linda has been with us that entire 20 years, both as a council, as staff, and individually. I've been in many of your offices discussing strategy, et cetera, and trying to figure out how to keep this agency going and thriving. And I am proud to say that, at this point, at our 20-year anniversary mark, we are not only surviving, we are thriving. In this past year, we have received a $1 million forgivable loan from the state of California to purchase a new building. It will be the first building that we actually own. We have also from HUD received about $1.3 million to not only continue with our current programs, but to expand those programs to serve more families. And specifically, many of you know that we have a transitional housing program. We currently have nine units. Between our building purchase and our HUD approval grant, we will expand that up to 29 units, which will give us the opportunity to serve all the families who go through our shelter program with transitional housing. Right now, only about a quarter of our families who go through our shelter program even have the opportunity of applying for our transitional housing program. I gave you all a, our brochure. It's been a while since I've passed it out to you. So, just look at the programs in the middle. Inland Temporary Homes, in the past 20 years, has gone from a 30-day shelter to a full-service agency with all these different programs. These programs are what's really made a difference with our families. We have a 90% success rate of families who graduate from our transitional housing program of being in housing within one to two years later, which is a phenomenal access rate, success rate nationwide. We are very excited about the things that we're doing. Our CDBG money is going more this year towards our mental health program because we are expanding that program dramatically with our new funding source also. So, I want to thank you for your support in the past. I want to encourage you to continue to support us in the future and continue the partnership that we've had these past 20 years. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Any questions?
Yeah, if, if I can just make one brief comment, because LeAnn is here. We only see her in front of City Council, I think, about once a year, and some of us have seen this operation through right from the very beginning, and I think the, the city, I'd like to just give a big vote of thanks to Inland Temporary Homes, you and your staff.
Thank you.
I know the amount of work that you've put in. I've sat with you in my office on several occasions when things didn't look this good.
No, you're right.
And I, I've got to admire your courage and your perseverance and your far-sightedness, and I really appreciate that for this community, I'll say that.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Cheryl Heeson from Redlands Family Service Association, welcome.
Hi.
Hi.
Thank you very much for having me. My name is Cheryl Heeson. I'm the Executive Director for Family Service Association. The opportunity to share with you tonight our needs, I really appreciate the opportunity to do that. Family Service is celebrating its 110th anniversary this year of building strong families. It's been a longtime institution in the East Valley. It's somewhat of a misnomer that we only serve the Redlands community because we do serve the entire East Valley, and as most of you can assume that somebody who is homeless comes from our local area, they're, they have no place to stay. So therefore, it's our job to help them figure out what their next step will be. We provide some of the most basic needs in life, like food and clothing and, and housing assistance. We provide basic life skills training, education classes, and a variety of other programs that help families become more self-sufficient. I realize that funding is shrinking and may actually, in the CDBG area, go completely gone. However, because of the same reasons that we're seeing shrinking, shrinking dollars, we're seeing increasing requests for service. More people than ever are struggling to make ends meet every day. In 2007, we saw over 1,300 families. More than 60 of those came from the city of, of Loma Linda, and we provided them with a variety of assistance, including rental, utility, and educational services as well. I appreciate your support throughout the years. I have been here many years to speak before you, and you've always been as generous as you can, and I appreciate that. You have any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Welcome, sir.
Oh, I'm kind of stuck right now, but I'm gonna get this out.
Okay.
Well, I'm here to represent my wife and her company. She's trying to, to develop her dream, and through her dream, she's allowing me to live my dream. And my dream is to, not piggyback off hers, but wow, as I'm here, I'm enjoying myself. I've watched this on TV before, but to actually be here is wonderful. And, man, I just, this is a blessing.
You get real bored in life, come every, every council meeting.
Oh, I, hey, one of the guys at my church is a Councilman, man, Severdino, and I watch him on TV, but to actually sit here and be called up here, I'm kind of nervous. Wow, but I'm here because my wife have a dream, and I've seen her for the past 18 years walk her own life out in what she's doing and what she's trying to propose to the committee here. So, like I say, as a young man here, I'm just here to support my family. I just signed my name up to say something because she asked me to be here, so to support her dreams, I'm here, and I just hope that, that y'all love our presentation. So, forgive me for what I signed up for, but I don't know, I just signed up to support my wife.
I, I'm not sure what her project is, though.
It's all just a tiny bit of value.
The, the project is Heal Country. It's also a transitional housing she's trying to develop through herself. She's, she works for San Bernardino County, but she's trying to develop something that helps women that come from her background and women that, that we have all in our community have seen that there is no help. As these young ladies stand here, there is no transition for women. I'm a man, if I can be open. I'm a black man that has been incarcerated, but I have been out 12 years. But out them 12 years, there has been no help, but my wife and myself in our dreams. Now, I'm a certified refrigeration technician, and boy, I'm going on. So I just think, for her dreams, my dreams can go on too. But with my dreams, I want to help somebody that was in my situation. So, that's what I'm hoping, that Heal Country can get, get out of here today.
Okay, thank you, sir. Hazel Beaumont. Oh, you're in the same program, okay.
Yeah. Good evening, Mr. Mayor and ladies and gentlemen. I'm Hazel Bowman, and I'm here to support Mrs. Hill too. She has a vision for another transitional housing program. Hers is a little bit different. She's planned to help women who are maybe separated from their families, have no means of support, and no place to go. We've seen this happen in our community, and, well, the house she plans to use, she's, she's prepared to use a house that she owns, three bedrooms with recreation space, bathroom, kitchen, facilities, and she would have five to six women living in, and she's prepared to have professional people that she knows, she's acquainted with, myself included, I'd be clerical help. Mrs. Hill plans to give these women counseling and alcohol and drug counseling, money management, help them to get referrals to services in our community that are there, and perhaps they do not know how to get in touch with them. Mrs. Hill, she'd be the director of this program, she calls Heal Country, and like I said, she has this house, and she's prepared to put up her house to start this program. We need the backing of our community leaders, and this is where we're asking for CDB, CDBG grants. I realize there are similar programs out there. I've seen other successful programs out in the West End. Nothing that I can think of in San Bernardino and surrounding areas such as she has in mind. I hope you'll give her a chance to explain further, and thank you for listening.
Thank you. She's, Gwen Hill is next, so we'll ask her. Thank you. Now, Gwen Hill, please. And the question is, where will this be located?
It's in Highland, it's the Highland area. My name is Gwen Hill, and I'm glad to be among you this evening. My husband spoke, my girlfriend spoke, now I'm gonna speak. Hill House, I mean, Hill House, Heal Country. I got that name from the story of Joshua, when he, after Moses went on, God asked Joshua, "Where do you want to live?" And Joshua chose Hill Country. Same thing with Abraham. Abraham chose Hill Country. So this, these names inspired me. I came from a funny background, what you call a dysfunctional family. And most women come out of these families one way or the other. They're disturbed, they have mental issues, they're depressed, they go to alcohol, they go to drugs, they have kids. Okay, the family usually want to take the kids and separate the mother from their children, okay? This is some stuff that I experienced. And the place that I want to get together that's in my spirit is a place to reach out to these women. I work for behavioral health at this time. I'm offering mental health services, I'm offering MSS services, I'm offering case management, okay? I'm offering networking. I want to show these people how to get out on their own. The goal is to set them right back into the, and, into this public eye within a year's time, helping them find their own place through housing, through DBH Housing, through the Housing Authority, or just on their own, being able to get up, select a newspaper, then I want to feed them spiritually. You understand? This is something that I didn't get. I walked straight into a homeless department thinking me and my child would have a place to stay easy. Those people turned me away. You understand? There was nothing out there for me. I deal with women depressed every day, coming, coming in my office crying to me. They all have the same problem. My family has turned my back, their back on me. They took my kids. I, what am I supposed to do? Their self-worth is gone, their self-esteem is low, they're depressed. They think they can self-medicate. They know deep down inside, when they sober up, the, the problem is still there. So, Heal Country is supposed to be designed to help these ladies through. Thank you. Any questions?
A question, ma'am. Do you have it set up already as a nonprofit corporation?
I'm working, sir, I'm not gonna lie, I'm working on that now. I'm trying to get everything together. I spoke to several people, I have, I have staff. I have staff, I have the home, I have everything except for the people.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions?
We do have some people who are ready to go. We just have...
Ma'am, if you're gonna speak, I need you to come forward.
We do have some prospective clients who are ready to go. The house is there. Mrs. Hill would be ready to start, you know, feeding the people and giving them the job-seeking skills and everything. We need backing of our local leaders that she can get this off the ground.
Okay, thank you.
We have case managers already in position. We have a mental health worker in position, a social worker in position, right now as we speak.
Thank you so much. I have Joseph Rodriguez.
Mayor Christman, City Council members, first, I want to thank you for your previous support. Last year, to my, my error, we actually missed your CDBG hearing, so last year, we weren't here. We are this year, briefly about the program, it's called Gang Reduction Intervention Team. The difference, I was listening to Mrs. Epps from probation, I know her very well, she sends us some of her youth. The difference between the great program that she was talking about and what we do is we work with, the majority of our youth are, the average age is about 16, 17. We're working with youth that are on probation, on Y parole, or the new DJJ parole. We work with them when they come out and try to give them some re-entry skills. We have young men that have been to the California Department of Corrections, left when they were 15 years old, and now they're 23, coming back out. And, I mean, you can imagine what kind of skills they have. Presently, our funders come from the Department of Corrections. We have four local sites, or primary sites, that's in Colton, Rialto, Fontana, and San Bernardino. Our main office is in the city of Redlands. We continue to work with Loma Linda University, Operation Clean Sweep, Operation Jessica. Other funders are law enforcement agencies, is the Redlands Police Department, they continue to work with us, and we continue to provide them services. Some of the city schools, we continue to work with, San Bernardino, Redlands Unified, Colton, San, and like that. Up to this date, we... Up to this date, we've serviced a little over three hundred and eighty-six students, like I said, with the average age being about seventeen. Out of that three eighty-six, there was thirty-eight of them that came directly from Loma Linda. That's kind of where we're at today and we continue to seek funding. Presently, we have an appointment on the nineteenth with Julio Marcel from the California Wellness Foundation. Several years ago, I think it was in two thousand and four, they funded us thirty thousand a year and gave that to us for the next three years. We're up for refunding, they're coming for a visit, and they've actually made a statement where we would probably be going from thirty thousand a year to a hundred, and that's a real good thing for us. And like I said, we have the grants and contracts with several state agencies and we're just trying to make a difference. We don't have all the answers, we don't claim to, but we do have a lot of experience.
Thank you so much. Paula Espinosa?
Welcome, thank you. My name is Paula Rae, R-A-E, Espinosa.
Oh, did I not say your, I didn't say your middle name yet, okay.
That's fine. Honorable Mayor, Councilman, council members. My name is Paula Rae Espinosa and I am a board member with Neighborhood Housing Services of the Inland Empire. And our request is a little bit different than the applicants you've had before you. What we are is a HUD-certified nonprofit housing organization and we provide homebuyer education, financial counseling. We also have a rehabilitation program and exterior beautification program for single-family homeowners. We also have a mobile home grant program for senior citizens and the disabled. And what we are requesting before you this evening is some funds, some CDBG funds to assist us with our homebuyer education program. Now, I don't have to tell you that in two thousand and seven, the foreclosure crisis came upon America and it also came upon the inland, San Bernardino County. In two thousand and seven, there were over fifty-seven thousand foreclosures registered here in San Bernardino County. So now we are also providing foreclosure counseling to families that are just on the verge of losing their home. And a lot of families, they don't know what to do and they get behind in their payments, they call their servicer, their financial institution, they get to customer service, customer service doesn't give them much information. So because of the foreclosure crisis, since we are a HUD-certified organization, we have direct lines to servicers. For example, we're working with Countrywide, Option One, Wells Fargo, let's see, Ocwen One, and these are institutions that we're working with to provide foreclosure counseling. I want to tell you, though, that we haven't had any phone calls for foreclosure from families in the city of Loma Linda. So I checked that data for you right before I left. However, we did provide homebuyer education to seventy-five families from the city of Loma Linda and eight of those families purchased homes. So we are, we have, we are providing a service to your community and to all, to a lot of the surrounding cities here in the county. If funded, we will use the funds to assist us with operating costs because we have materials that we have to, we like to give all the families some manuals and some pamphlets and also, it will also help pay for a portion of foreclosure counseling salary. So I know that you don't get much funding, I didn't realize that when I wrote the grant, and so your fifteen percent is quite limited, but if you could give us something, it would go to good use. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. Elizabeth Hernandez.
This is my first time here, so bear with me.
This is a mean crowd up here, you gotta know that.
I am Elizabeth Hernandez. I'm a project and program manager for Housing Action Resource Trust. We're a 501(c)(3) nonprofit housing development corporation out of Rancho Cucamonga. Excuse me, I'm still also battling a cold. And we are property owners here in Loma Linda. We administer different programs to help promote homeownership. Among them are down payment assistance, housing counseling, pre-purchase, post-purchase, foreclosure prevention, loss mitigation, and we have a mortgage rescue program. We, this year, we've received a lot of requests from some of our partners, specifically transitional housing partners, that already provide services so that we can help them meet some of the, some of the items that are not being provided in their, by their programs, specifically home education. Some of these programs are already overburdened with providing either mental health services, other types of supportive services for their clients, and home education is one of the items that is being left by the wayside. And what is happening is that although these programs are experiencing a lot of success with providing, or sorry, helping transition families into permanent housing, it's not really home ownership. That's where our program would come in. We're requesting funding so that we can continue services to some of these programs that have come to our doors and would like for us to provide them home education to their clients, financial fitness, let's see, what else? Home education in the form of a life skill, credit counseling, credit building by not providing their clients or information so that they could get into further debt, but really building, help them build credit. And the reason why we're requesting funding is because this particular segment of clients really requires long-term counseling, housing counseling. It's not really the type of eight, sixteen, or even fifty hours of home education that we would provide to a first-time homebuyer. So this is something that we really, in order for us to expand services to transitional housing clients, we do require a little bit of financial help. In the past, we have been fully funded through our housing endeavors, through the sale of our own properties, through the construction of our own properties, but we are, this year, we are requesting funding so that we can expand services. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And we appreciate your help. Even if we're not funded this year, we will do our best to help any family that is facing foreclosure or that is homeless or that is really in need of services. They come to our doors, they're referred to us from different agencies. Thank you.
Just one brief question.
Sure.
Where does, you may mention this, but where does most of your funding originate from?
Good question. We are actually housing developers and also we are approved to do HUD homes. Sorry, I'm losing my...
That's all right, that's all right.
HUD Homes rehabilitation. So a lot of our income is generated from the sale of our homes and as well as our down payment assistance programs out there. And this is really through our collaboration with ITH, Inland Temporary Homes, we love that program and we really want to help expand and provide services to agencies like theirs. However, because of the changes in the market right now, we can't accommodate everybody. So this is really a need within the community. We have helped some of your constituents through our down payment assistance program and also through our HUD Homes program. So we are serving your community and we will greatly welcome funding so that we can continue to do so through transitional services.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Larry Townsend.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and City Council. Now, I'm gonna make this as brief as possible because you probably all want to go home too. I'm representing Dash Incorporated, which is Developing Aging Solutions with Heart Incorporated, and the other place, Adult Daycare, an Alzheimer daycare resource center. We serve the whole East Valley and we provide daycare services, family counseling, case management, information referral, caregiver educational classes, and we are also a training site for the Loma Linda University School of Nursing and School of Public Health. I am here to request funding to help more families in the city of Loma Linda in need of our services. Within, with rising costs and cuts in spending, not-for-profits like Dash have to scramble for funding or be forced to raise fees to meet higher costs of operating. Elder Americans are on the bottom of the list in charitable organizations. Our charities have gone way down in getting money in. We believe Dash Incorporated worthy of the funding as we have the only copyrighted treatment plan for people with Alzheimer's and related dementias. Our operationalized treatment is changing symbols, treating the spirit of the elderly, a psychosocial model designed to treat the spiritual core of our clients and their caregivers. As part of the model, we provide art therapy, phototherapy, and other activities specifically geared to each individual person. We identify a two-client treatment approach to address the dignity of the family, the person diagnosed, and the disease and their primary caregiver. I want to thank you in advance for any money that you can give Dash Incorporated on behalf of our clients and their caregivers. I know these decisions at times of tightening budgets can be hard for our members, but we do thank you and look forward to a continuing and fruitful partnership with the city of Loma Linda. Thank you. Any questions?
I guess not, thank you.
Thank you.
That's all the cards I have on this issue.
Mayor, I'm sorry, there's one more from Stan with the library.
Did you, okay, in any case, come forward, Stan.
Thank you. Sorry, I misplaced my slip there.
I somehow missed it, but it might be here somewhere.
Well, I won't say anything about a slip is showing. Good evening, my name is Stan Sewell, I'm with the Loma Linda Branch Library, we are next door. I'd like to thank Mayor Christman, the city council and staff for their ongoing support through CDBG and otherwise for us over the years. I'd like to take this opportunity to publicly thank everyone for our new construction, hopefully open in June, to better serve the community. Currently, the library has five one-on-one tutors ongoing. We have an English improvement class that we also meet here in the community room and we're trying to provide services for low and moderate income families with illiterate people in the households. We probably get at least two or three new people each month and needing services and we also, I like to say publicly, could also use more tutors. We provide free training and materials. The CDBG funds are also used to keep the library open on Wednesdays, which is our literacy day, and we're seeking ten thousand dollars to maintain and improve our offerings. Currently, we have, aside from the library staff, one part-time person who serves the Loma Linda, Mentone, and Ucaipa libraries. So she is stretched very thin. You probably realize with the state budget that we're taking a bit of a hit, probably to the tune of a hundred thousand dollars for the library system. So our materials budget is being affected as of this month. And so we're seeking, you know, these funds also to help out with that. We are happy to work with other entities that we heard from here today. We also have gone out to the Victoria School, we've done programs there, some outreach, and we do notice that there is a need in the north end of Loma Linda. And it's really good to have people come in, hear what we're doing, get library cards and use our services. The goal of our program is to enhance literacy skills through the English Improvement, books, tapes, CDs, DVDs, videos, and computer access, as well as the staff. We use our funds also to train the volunteers and to provide materials. And I'd just like to say again, thank you for your past support for us and we, hopefully we can get some more support. Thank you.
Thank you. No questions? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Now, I think I have everybody. It's the pleasure of the council. I think you were the first speaker last year.
I've talked too much already tonight, let somebody else.
Are we ready to go home? Is that it? Everybody's too tired to deal with it?
Well, Mr. Mayor, obviously, there are a lot of good presentations here. The difficult part is that the funding level has actually dropped a little bit from last year to this year. And so, one question I have for council and the city manager is, would we be able to, and I know we've done this in the past once or twice, take some funds from the RDA budget and use them in the library area? It's not a great deal to fund the library request fully, but allow some additional funds to be for other projects. And I'm just gonna ask the city manager if that legally is possible to do and if we have the funds, the ten thousand dollars.
We've done it in the past, yes.
So with that, with the concurrence of the vice chair of the agency, would we be supportive of urging that be done, Dusty, to free up ten thousand to make it easier on the rest of the budget? Okay, so, Mr. Mayor, we'd like to encourage that be funded in that way if the rest of you are, obviously, as agency members, are willing to allow us to do that. We'd like to recommend fully funding the library request, but out of redevelopment funds, and then free ten thousand, so you can fund other things. Okay, does that help? And then, I guess I'll make a second, as long as we're waiting for other people to make comments, I'd like to make a suggestion that we fund Inland Temporary Homes, the same level we did last year of twelve thousand and fifty, since we obviously have a little additional funding available for the... Those are my suggestions.
I'll make a couple of comments without making recommendations, I'll let somebody else do that. The housing assistance, seems like we've already got programs like that through our own low mod program through the redevelopment agency. So I recognize these people come and make presentations, but I don't get too excited about funding that through CDBG grants when we already fund those kinds of programs through our own low and moderate income housing program through the redevelopment agency. So that's one comment. The concern, and I recognize the people from Heal Country are here, and that sounds very important, Highland is getting a little far away from our territory, and my other concern there is that, you know, we're somewhat regional in our approach, is that it doesn't seem like they've got the nonprofit corporate status set up yet. And I know paperwork is paperwork and I hate it as much as anybody, I'm a little concerned about that point.
Is that a requirement for the county to put in? I mean, these are certified by the county right now.
I don't know.
Is that, isn't that, is that correct? That these have to be, in order to get on this list, have to be certified through the county?
Yes, the county gave me this list.
So having that paperwork all in place is not a requirement? I understand your concern, but it's apparently not a requirement, which I would expect it would be, but it's not.
The issue that we had before, so I'm just making my general comments, at the very beginning of council meeting, we had the presentation by Kimberly Epps about... of council meeting, we had the presentation by Kimberly Epps about help with the school system, and I assume that we might be doing something out of the general fund on that later. And the GRIT program seems fairly comparable to that. Those are my comments for now. I'm looking for a motion.
Well, Mr. Mayor, what's your, what's your thought on the idea of funding the library out of RDA, and then having some other funds, and then fully funding inland temporary homes?
Yes, I would certainly concur with that.
Okay, then how much that leaves for other things we could calculate? The rule is now that the county wants a minimum of 25, 5,000 now.
Well, that's, that's a request, I'm not sure if it's a rule. I mean, we, we're a small city, we can't always do what the county wants. They don't always do what we want, so why should we always do what they want?
Well, if you fully fund inland temporary home of $15,000, you will leave with $6,330.
Yeah, the total.
No, it was $12,050.
$12,000.
Well, that, okay, that's fine, that request is 15, but 12, okay.
Yeah, I know. We, we recognize.
We'll go as far as we can, we'll go at least what we did last year.
You have roughly $9,000.
So...
Okay, let me, nobody's jumping forward here, and, you know, since I'm chair, I don't generally make the motions, but I guess I will, since I'm not seeing a lot of activity.
Well, okay, there's a principle that, I always think of Councilmember Brower as articulating, but since he's even more quiet tonight, which is that...
What's the matter with you, Stan?
Okay, Stan, if...
This is your job.
You tell me if, if this is wrong, but I always think of you, and maybe it's Floyd that does this, but always says that if there's a program that we have funded before, we do, as long as they're viable, they're continuing, doing their job, we try to be consistent in continuing to support. And I think I've heard that said before, and the Family Service Association of Redlands has been on our list before, would there be support to continue last year's level for them, if we followed that principle?
And the one other comment I have made and will make again, I think not only that principle, but clearly the programs that are either based in Loma Linda or have significant numbers, and I think citizens served that live here, and I think Family Service of Redlands meets both those requirements. So I would concur.
Yeah. If you want to, feel free to bring it up. Do we have a minute? We'll save that one.
That means what? That means about $7,000.
I'm, I'm, I'm informed reliably from the left side of me that, that we have funded GRIT in the past.
Well, let me, let me ask the people from Highland, the Hill Country, have you seen anybody from Loma Linda yet in your program? You haven't started your program yet?
Yes, we already started, we just...
Please come forward.
We're starting by, we're putting furniture in, we have people, we have staff, we have everything.
Okay, how many people, how much staff, how many people have you seen from Loma Linda?
Well, the people that come into my department, and it's a lot of people that deals with Gilbert Street, from Loma Linda, from Redlands, from Mentone, we service all of them, Ucaipa.
Can you put numbers to that, please?
Numbers?
Well, okay, the population of the clinic that the Gilbert Street complex serves, there's over 2,000 of them, so if half of them were women, and half of that were women that we want to help, we'd be talking maybe 500 women. But her house is prepared to help five to six women at a time, and while they live there, they're going to be learning to be self-sufficient, so we're not just excluding ourselves to San Bernardino alone. We applied for the CDBG grant, which includes the local area, both San Bernardino and surrounding area. And we do meet people from as far as Colton all the way to Ucaipa, so that area right there.
Okay, thank you so much, appreciate it. Stan, we need a motion.
I greatly admire the passion that these individuals have, but again, I'm left back the principle of programs that we have seen established and worked with, and secondly, are centered or service a large number in our community, so I'll try and put, as I see it, the $10,000 from redevelopment for the library. As we mentioned, inland temporary home, $11,323, so I understand that then we have the $10,000 from the library, and I would move that we have full funding to the request from GRIT and from the Family Service of Redlands.
Full funding being how much?
I believe both of them requested $5,000.
One of the point of debate is very minor, but inland temporary homes, we were talking about giving them what we gave them last year, can we do that? That's the $12,050, so they keep the same level.
Yeah, I guess the only reason for the five is trying to keep the county happy, and if we want to give inland temporary the same and cut the other two down to four, four whatever, if that will fly.
Or take it away from Juanita and the Nida Streets.
I think we can't.
I don't think we have that option, do we?
That's the one deal we can't change.
Can't do that.
Because of that, you know.
So looking to staff for advice, if they're comfortable with that, I certainly can support that, and I would make that my motion for the $12,050 for inland temporary, and then the reduction, as mentioned, for the other two.
And incorporating the, the 10 from RDA, the library, so we don't leave that out.
We're going to mess up the program for $500 for each, that's just...
Well, they're allowed to match with others that they get from other cities, that, we have that discussion before, so if they get something from other cities, then they're up to five.
So your motion is?
$10,000 from RDA to the library, $12,050 to inland temporary homes, and then split what's left between Family Service of Redlands and GRIT.
And that's your second. Is there any further discussion?
We, we could throw in an extra $727 from the RDA and forget the dividing of what's left.
You want to go home, don't you? Okay.
Obviously, we would support, if you need to bring it up a little bit, and you can justify it legally, you'll work it out, okay?
There's a motion and a second, and I think you've got the motion, Pam, okay?
Yeah.
Now Floyd, any, any opposition? So ordered. Thank you, folks. Have a good evening. And our apologies to those of you that we didn't fund your programs. Okay, we will go to the consent calendar, which we will vote as a block.
Second.
Can I just ask one question, not to pull it, but one question? You know, I think there's a lot of concern with citizens about how safe our finances and funds are, just wondering if staff can give us a 60-second or less update on the bulk of our money with the so-called LEIF agency? Do we need to worry about, you know, any derivatives or subprime loans, or...
No, we're not allowed to invest in those types of investments.
But do we invest in other investments that invest in those investments?
I'm sorry?
Do we have any collateral or secondary exposure to those kinds of investments through other instruments?
No, I don't believe so at all, I don't think... Some of the state's funds are invested in those ways, some of the PERS and STIRS and those funds, but LAIF money is completely liquid. If we called them tomorrow and asked for all of our money, they'd have to send it to us.
Maybe just for some of our comfort at the next council meeting, we could just bring back a, just a one or two-minute report on, on that with some additional details. Appreciate it, thanks.
I'm going to be a little difficult here, and I'm going to quote item 13 from the consent calendar.
And I second the pulling of that item.
Okay, thank you. We have a motion on the balance. Any opposition? So ordered. Item 13, it's my feeling that we're getting a little picky here, and it might be more trouble than it's worth to collect these monies. I mean, I'm not sure that, I mean, it just seems like a small amount and hardly worth the hassle, unless there's a significant abuse developed that I'm not aware of.
Can I give a short report? I'm sorry. Oh, if, I'm sorry. There's a couple of things, since, since the past couple of years, we have more lighting, we have add more lighting to the park, for example, the tennis court at Bailey Park, the tennis court at Hoda Crooks Park, and the ball field park. So we have tremendous increase in electric bill for, for park users, and also the, some of the users for the ballpark right now, every night you go out, is, is a, is a private gentleman who does coaching for the, for the, the baseball pitching coach, and he does get paid for that, so therefore, we, we think that he should pay for, for electric bill, and the same thing with Little League, so...
Well, I guess I would agree if it was for commercial purposes, Little League doesn't seem like commercial purposes to me. The first part, I would agree with you on, I'm having a hard time charging Little League to use it, I mean, that's part of what taxes go for. So, those are my comments, I'll see if there's any support.
Let, let me give you, right now, we have really four agencies that, that lease the, the, well, ask permission to use the baseball field, with including lighting. One is Little League, another one is the, the baseball coaching gentleman, one is the academy, and another one is the Redlands academies that have used our facility, so...
I should say that I've had, just in the past month, one, another private person asked me what facilities we have and how they would do this for private coaching. And in this case, it was a volunteer. It would be volunteering for the community, but it would still be coaching kids.
If you wanted to exempt Little League from the fees, you could certainly do so.
Well, I guess I'd rather turn it around and say if it's being used for commercial purposes, we would charge, but otherwise, I don't get too excited about charging the fees.
I would concur.
I agree.
Probably enough to go to Hokey Yogi and get a knockshake. Can you just bring this back, and, and we'll just continue this item, and, or do you want to take an action now and just?
I'd rather you take an action.
Okay, let's, let's have a motion then, Stan, you were, you were with me here.
I will move item 13 and have the fees only apply to commercial use, and I think the rest of it we could probably utilize with just that understanding.
I'll second, second that.
Okay. Any opposition to that motion? So ordered. Item 16, second reading and roll call vote, adopting 2006 International Wildland Urban Interface Code, city clerk.
Mayor members of the council, Division Chief Crawford made the presentation last time, this would replace the, the former hazardous fire code for the areas that are bordering the city proper. You've introduced it last time at first reading, and this time it would be a second reading and a roll call vote.
Okay, do we need a motion for, to do it by title only?
Move that.
Second.
Any opposition?
My only comment, long-winded last time, won't be this time, still worry about some of the enforcement and so forth, but we'll just have to keep, keep monitoring that, and that's, I guess, what city councils are for.
Okay, and I didn't hear any opposition to that motion to do it by roll call, by title only, so that's passed.
It is entitled in ordinance of the city council of the city of Loma Linda, adopting and amending the 2006 edition of the International Wildland Urban Interface Code. You may vote. And it passes unanimously.
Thank you. We will go to item 17, and I do have Kurt Swiger here, has asked to speak, but this is an item I asked to be placed on the agenda, and I must admit, during the last few weeks, I've been intending to call Fred Ramos at, kind of the mayor of Bryn Mawr, kind of, and get his input, and I haven't done so, but I did hear that the people over there would kind of like this skateboard park. I know the sheriff's department has this visceral dislike for skateboard parks, because they think that there's graffiti there and other kinds of gang problems, and I take that into account, at the same time, I feel like we need to do something for youth in the city that like to do this kind of thing, and there's a lot of kids that like skateboards. And if we don't allow it in one place, it happens on city streets, it happens in parking lots, it happens at the mall over here, and it just seems like something that's fairly easy to set up, it's not a lot of maintenance, after all, it is cement. I did hear the comment that the city of Fontana had been having problems with their skateboard park, and that they had closed it, and I talked to Mayor Mark Nuey, and he said, well, Bob, as a matter of fact, we had a murder at our skateboard park, which kind of plays into what the sheriff's office has said, and that's a scary thing, but murders happen, and they closed it for one week, and they put lights in, and since then, they have actually decided to add another skateboard park, and it is working very well in the city of Fontana. City of Ucaipa has one, and I've been there with my grandson, actually, and a lot of people use it, especially Sunday mornings, Sunday afternoons. I would think that if we placed it across the street from what, we haven't designated a name yet, at the Bryn Mawr Park, and that's an area that's not close to any housing, it would be easy to get to, it's on the outskirts of the city, it would be public, and I think it would be a nice location and very much appreciated, and a good, good use for it. So that's my position, and I'm not, this isn't something that, I've checked with a lot of people to see what degree of support there is. I did go to a seminar with, actually with Bob Zipri about three or four years ago...
It's true.
At the California League of Cities in Monterey, and the League of Cities has quite a bit of information on how to set these up, very specifically how to enforce usage, how to enforce, or how to deal with the liability issues involved, and I'm sure they have good programs where they could probably even give us better information today on it. So with that, I do have a request to speak from Kurt Swiger, but Floyd, you're first.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I don't know if you recall, but probably about six or seven years ago... Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I don't know if you recall, but probably about six or seven years ago, at my encouragement, we had a couple of young people from my part of town actually come to city council and beg for a skateboard park because they were doing their skateboarding in the middle of the street, middle of Curtis Street, which was fine. We all watched out for them, and they were having a good time. But they begged for a skateboard park, and I don't know if they're still skateboarding. And I would certainly support something like this, only on one condition, that before you leave city council and whenever that's gonna happen, that we see you traverse this park from east to west and north to south on a skateboard yourself, Mr. Mayor. I'd love to see that.
That's a condition we probably can't meet because I have tried to get on a skateboard and lasted about two feet. Any other comments from council? Kurt, please come forward. Welcome, sir. Haven't seen you in a while.
And when we're done, Mr. Swiger will do it on skateboard.
Will you do it on a skateboard?
I could try, but probably wouldn't be very successful in a few years. You know, this issue has been probably a topic in the city for probably at least ten years, and it's been before our committee a number of times. And every time we go to the Sheriff's Department, we get the update, and every skate park that we've ever had any feedback on has been bad. And it seems like we continue to add to our parks. We're adding baseball fields, tennis. Being on more than one committee, I know that our Public Works Department is pretty well strapped for resources. We're putting another requirement on them and probably not going to fund them with any additional resources. We can't even, we can't even give them lawnmowers when they request them. It never seems to make it through the budget process. I mean, these are pretty major issues. Have we gone out and canvassed that area?
No, I have not.
I'm concerned, what have we done presently that's going to improve the safety of a skateboard park and get rid of the concerns we've had over the past ten years? I don't know that we've done anything, and how are we gonna approach that? I mean, I'm not opposed to skateboarding. As I, you know, I've seen the one in Santa Barbara, and it's run very nicely. But it's right in the middle of a community area where there's lots of people. There's not gonna be anybody really there to watch them.
That's a good point.
Yeah, and those are all factors to look at. So, don't have easy answers. I guess my concept tonight is to just see what the sense of the council is on this issue. So, appreciate your comments, sir.
Okay, thank you. You know, like I've said, it's been before our committee a number of times. We actually brought it up, and we've supported it until we saw the negativity that was surrounding it.
Where did, where did, if I can ask?
Yeah, please do.
Where have you had a chance to check, and how recently? Which areas?
The recent one was the Fontana one, and then the Ukiepa-Calamasa area.
How's the Ukiepa-Calamasa one working? Not well?
Last we heard, they had had problems up there. I hadn't heard probably, oh, it's been last year when we got an update, I think. As I recall, it was probably last year when we got an update.
Yeah, I went to the one in Ukiepa. But the mayor, let me add, you asked me to call City of Fontana again.
Yes.
Which I did. I talked to their police department, and the new skateboard park that they plan to build, they plan to have full-time staff there to keep it in force.
Oh, yeah.
Because what happened is they, they don't want to be the bad guy to go to the park and tell the kid that, no, you cannot ride a bicycle in the skateboard park, and no, you have to put, you have to put in the helmet, the knee pad, and if you don't do that, they kick them out. And that's what they did to the kid. So, from what the police department said, the lieutenant that I talked to today said that the new one planned to have a staff that be there full-time so that can keep an eye on the kid at a skateboard.
I hadn't heard full-time staff. That might change things also.
You know, and one other issue is, you know, we keep hearing in our committee meetings that we're having issues where people are getting in arguments over just park use permits. I'd sure hate to get in an argument with somebody hitting somebody with a skateboard because they were in their path.
Somebody getting hit with a parking permit?
[laughing] I think the Sheriff's Department has decided to come out and respond to a couple of situations. So.
Does, does one of us?
Our resources are pretty well taxed.
Thank you.
Does somebody here serve on the Parks and Recreation Committee as the liaison? That committee, I understand, has received this topic twice and rejected it both times. That's what I'm led to believe. Is that, do we, do we still take advice from our citizen committees?
Yeah, I, I have to respond. I do look to Parks Committee very much for their recommendation on this issue. I can see, you know, the attraction, and in my younger years, I actually did a little bit of skateboarding. If I tried it now, I'm sure I'd kill myself, which some may think would be a good thing. But, you know, there's nothing inherently wrong with skateboarding, but admittedly, certain things do seem to, at times, attract more problems than others. Just like, when's the last time you heard of any, you know, knifing or shootings of someone coming out from the Redlands Symphony versus, you know, an all-night rave music party? So, you know.
Phantom of the Opera had some bad things occurring.
I have to respect the concerns from the sheriff as well, and I think certainly they speak with experience. And I'd like to also emphasize what Kurt mentioned. We've really, in the last number of years, tried to beef up our recreational opportunities, the ball fields, the, you know, doubling the tennis courts. In fact, we had no tennis courts, I think a lot of us can remember, not too long ago. Adding the half-basketball court, you know, the dog park, the other recreational things. So, until I can hear enthusiastic support for the concept and the appropriate location from Parks Committee, I can't support it at this time.
But in answer to your question, Dusty, partly the reason I'm bringing it up now is that in the past, when we talked about a skateboard park, it was to be at one of the current city parks. And there was concern that neighbors might not like it, might be loud, or it was in the middle of the residential part of the community. I felt like it was a little different here. It's a new park. It would not be in the middle of a residential area. It's land that we're not going to be able to do anything else with. So that's a little bit of a difference here. It's new circumstances that I felt we had that might warrant another look. I'm not hearing overwhelming support for my suggestions here, though, and it's not the first time I've gone down in flames.
You know, I have, I have a suggestion. I appreciate, you know, Kurt, what you've, you picked up. Maybe one of the things we could do is, you know, table it for now, get a little more information on how some of the things are working in the other cities. And it was useful to hear, you know, the Fontana staffing comment. Maybe we can look at some additional things, and then maybe we'll get a better idea if it's something to look at in the future. Not move forward on tonight, but do a little more studying because those are, those are fair points.
Okay.
If that seems reasonable.
Do you want to say something? Please come forward. Are you gonna help me out here? Are you gonna?
Yes, sir.
I need help tonight on this one.
I will suggest an idea for you. I've seen a lot of this on TV in the last year, not only with motorcycles, BMX bikes, and skateboards, and championship-type things. The thing that hit me when you were talking back here was, there's a lot of different pieces of equipment or types of things you could put in. If you put the half-pikes in, you don't want them going up because if they fall, there's a case for injury. If you have a little ramp that has a big open top to it, you can go up it, over it, and down it. Okay, you're not gonna have as much fall injury possibilities with that. If you go up and you start sliding down a rail, if you're not balanced right, you're gonna fall, twist, an ankle or whatever. But maybe make them with limited amount of injury possibilities, and say if you want to go above and beyond that, go to some of the other cities. But you can start this way, maybe, and see how it goes. And I'm willing to look at some of the pieces of equipment and throw some ideas at you if you'd like.
Thank you, sir. I, I think this is an item that just needs to just kind of be held off for some future time when.
I've seen a lot of.
We have more excitement for this.
I've seen a lot of skateboarding on YouTube. It's usually under the category of face plants.
I don't even know what YouTube is, although I've heard a lot about it.
But you know what a face plant is?
No, I don't know that either, Dusty. I, you know, I have a computer at work, and I have a cellphone.
Landing on your face without benefit of other body parts hitting first.
Oh, okay, okay.
It's not good.
Someday, I'm gonna even find out what an iPod is. I'm gonna get there. Okay. Let's move on. That one died a quiet death tonight, I think. Council Bill oh two thousand eight dash oh one, first hearing set public hearing for February twenty-six pertaining to regulation of second-hand smoke. City Attorney. There's a motion. Is there a second?
I'll second it. Just only quick question I have. It just seems like state ordinances already cover most all this. There are a few exceptions. Why, why do we include, I guess, some of these things that I understand were already covered by state, i.e. enclosed facilities and so forth, museums, so on?
Well, what I did in this regard was to kind of replace the existing ordinance with something entirely new. It covers the same issues. There was some cutting and pasting that went on, and I think Pam distributed a new draft that had a couple of things that got inadvertently omitted. And I noticed just looking just now that the index to section numbers omitted a couple of the sections that had been pasted back in. So, that should be amended to reflect what follows in the subparts.
Are you looking at the first page or something?
It's just the bullet points.
No, that's already in the city code. You have to read, then there's additions.
I may not have understood all the changes then.
That's already prohibited.
Right.
You're not against it, you just went in harder than you wanted.
To summarize, there are additions to the definitions. There are prohibitions on smoking in public areas beyond enclosed areas. So, streets and outdoor areas would be included. There's also language regarding smoke-free multi-unit residences that is new. And that language actually was something that was recommended in another city by the local apartment management association. They actually favor restrictions on smoking in the units that they manage for various reasons.
That would be difficult to enforce, wouldn't it?
The managers enforce all sorts of rules and regulations routinely, and it's fairly simple to determine if a person's been smoking in their unit when it comes time to clean and prepare for another tenant.
If city attorney's happy with all the language, then I'm happy.
Okay, we do have a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
So, the things that add to already state-prohibited smoking in places of work would be the public places?
Yeah, if you look on section eight, ten, oh, four, oh, it's not a page, page seven, look way up at the top, public places. And then if you look over on the left-hand side, public places are defined as, what I had requested specifically, when I made this request, is even street sidewalks, plazas, bars, restaurants, including sidewalks.
So, this would be?
So, in parks, any place.
This would be twelve, within twelve feet of the street in the public right-of-way?
It's a good question, isn't it?
[laughing] Because not every place has sidewalks. But if those are defined as public places, and I note that the reporter for the San Bernardino son is scribbling wildly. I think he's, that's, this is his angle for the night.
Press enterprise.
Oh, press, press, sorry, Darryl, press enterprise. Sorry about that.
He's gonna.
They only delivered half of my papers last week, so I'm not sure.
Okay, we do have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Any opposition? So ordered. I placed on the agenda item nineteen, now, to update this council on the status of Anderson-Tippecanoe interchange. I am slightly beyond frustrated at the progress being made on this project. I was under the impression it was much farther along than it is. I went to a meeting last week with Jarb, and we had Dennis Hansberger and Josie Gonzalez from Supervisors Offices, and we're having another meeting tomorrow morning after a sandbag meeting, and Mayor Pat Morris will be there from San Bernardino. What we have now isn't what I saw the last time that I thought was a final design.
Well, we had a final design years ago, Bob.
Well, I, that's what I thought. That's what I thought. What I saw last week, you could almost put in the back of a napkin in five minutes. I thought we were full-fledged into the environmental impact reports, and we are not. At the stage we're going, we'll have this done the year two thousand and fifty.
You said fifty, not fifteen.
I said fifty. It's frustrating to me. I'm, I don't understand what's taking so long on this.
Mr. Mayor.
Just letting you guys know that.
Bob, you're on sandbag.
I'm on sandbag. I'm on sandbag, and very frustrated.
Well, a question, maybe Floyd's question's my question. What do you think's happening? Because obviously, you've expressed your concern to them. What are they telling you about the change in plans and things?
Well, I didn't think I heard any excuses that were good enough for this project to be basically at ground zero after they'd been working on it for eight years.
Would there be a possibility that at some point, we could invite them over to make a, you know, would it waste our time and their time? Or do you think it'd be useful to have them come over and, and address it?
I actually asked them to come this evening, and they, I suggested that they would rather not.
They suggested they would, they asked to come, or?
No, they asked not to come.
Oh.
And they suggested that we might want to have our meetings tomorrow first and get a little more data together. So, I'm sure that they will be here in the next few weeks. But I'm just telling you, folks, that we've got traffic problems in this city that are not being addressed fast enough as far as this project is concerned. And the last project that we looked at, the only thing it does from the Loma Linda side of that freeway is widen Anderson on both sides of the road between Redlands Boulevard and the freeway. Now, the exit ramp will get widened, and then there will be a kind of a U-turn lane to go back westward on Redlands Boulevard. That's the extent of what happens on the Loma Linda side of this project. On the north side, they're gonna have some different ramps and circles to get on the freeway. And by widening the lanes on Anderson, it will certainly alleviate some of the traffic backups that we've had on this project. And one of my questions was, if that's all that's happening on the Loma Linda side, can we just bifurcate this process and let the City of Loma Linda just proceed on its own? We'll widen those two lanes on both sides and get started doing something. And Jarb, you were gonna add something?
Yes, I wanted to add something. Yes, we, as a matter of fact, the City of Loma Linda, we already completed the design for widening the east side of Anderson from Redlands to the on-ramp to provide a free right turn on Redlands Boulevard, to go north on Anderson, and a free right turn onto the on-ramp. The plan is, the design is complete. The plan is, the design's completed. Right now, we already sent a letter to the property owner, asked for the easement, and so we are ahead of Sandbag on this, on this project. And, but the problem is, we have to pay for it ourselves. And if you want to do on the east side, I mean, on the west side of Anderson, yes, we can do that, but again, the city have to pay for it ourselves.
Now, see, part of the issue, this is a $50 million project, all of the money is there, it has been there for a long time, because of earmarks, hate to use that word, I was trying to think of a better word for it, but didn't think fast enough, from Congressman Lewis's office. So I'm going to ask the newspaper to find a better word for it, don't use earmarks. Grants or something like that. Anyway, the money is there.
It's legitimate, this is legitimate. I-10 is obviously a major corridor to LA, and everybody knows it, and if we back up onto I-10, it cuts the cross-country highway.
And we appreciate Jerry Lewis's help on this project. However...
Well, it does, yeah.
The local cities and county, we will be contributing our fair share of the overall cost of this project, which means that basically, we're going to be contributing to the circle ramps and everything north of the freeway. What we're going to get out of this is widening two lanes south of the freeway. That's okay, as long as it helps alleviate our traffic problems. When I first asked about bifurcating the process and letting us just go ahead and widen the two lanes now, then the question was, would that come under the project, and would we even get reimbursed for that if we do it before the rest of the design is done and ready or approved? So I have also sent a letter to Sandbag saying that after this project, our next major project would be the Mountain View interchange. Because as a road comes down Mountain View from around the airport area, that interchange is going to get busier. At the rate we're going on the Anderson-Tippecanue, let's get started right now on Mountain View, because it's going to take a while. So I'm just expressing my frustration, probably expressing it too forcefully, because...
Well, Mayor, if I could add, you frustrate a lot slower than I do, because I got frustrated when Sandbag came to us about a year and a half ago and said that they weren't going to even start the project until 2015 or something. And that's when I asked you, as a redevelopment agency, to fund the east side, and that's what we're doing, and that's what JARB's, and I instructed JARB to go, just go and do it, let's just do it ourselves. The heck with Sandbag and the heck with the federal government. We can't wait that long, we have a problem now.
When they eventually get to doing the rest of the project, can we just withhold our share of the funds to the tune of what we've already spent?
I'd rather not go there quite yet. I will indicate, however, that having sat on the Sandbag board for years, I've seen other interchanges get done. The Sierra interchange, for instance, in Fontana, now the Cherry, is it Cherry Valley or Cherry?
Cherry, I think it is.
And then, of course, in Ucaipa, Live Oak Canyon's getting done. This interchange has got to be one of the worst in the county, and we can't seem to get it past, past zero. So that's my frustration. Maybe I need somebody a little tougher or meaner than me representing us at the Sandbag and get this project going, but I am disillusioned. So that's it. Just an update. Yeah, Floyd?
A week ago Friday, well, yeah, a couple weeks ago, I got a letter stating that there was going to be a meeting at the Morongo Casino, being called by regional water agencies from both Riverside and San Bernardino Counties to address the, as it stated, the water crisis in Southern California. And so I attended the meeting at the casino, and I expected to see probably, oh, maybe 15 or 20 people there. There was probably over 300 people at the meeting, including our state representatives and all sorts of people represented there. And a number of speakers spoke about the major water crisis that we are facing in Southern California, because of adjudication of Colorado River water, we're going to get a lot less of that. We're three years into a major drought, one of the most severe ones we've had, and so water coming from the mountains is not nearly what it has been. And our allocation of water from the Sacramento Delta is being cut back to 30% of what we've usually had because of the Sacramento Delta smelt, which is a little fish that gets into the pumps, and we need to protect the fish, so we're going to, they're going to cut our water way back. And so we are facing a serious water crisis in Southern California, and this, all the speakers were encouraging us to figure out every way we can to save water. After all the speakers had their say, I was the first one on my feet, because there were some things I didn't understand. The first question I had was, well, I've never had, although we're in this major water crisis, and I believe we must have one, because all the experts are telling us that we have one, I've never had my water turned off, or even a hint of my water being turned off. And in fact, we had, from our local regional water agency, we had them here a few weeks ago, telling us that we have plenty of water in this basin for anything we could hope to do. And in order for me to get across to my constituents that we were in a crisis, I needed to have, I needed to get rid of this disconnect that we, nobody's had their water turned off yet or even threatened. And then one person at the table said something that brought it all into perspective, and this is what he said. "There is not a water shortage crisis in California. There is plenty of water in California for every person and for every project we could even imagine to build. There is plenty of water. There is no water shortage. What there is, is a shortage of cheap water. If you should ever get your tap turned off so that you couldn't flush your toilet, Mr. Mayor, you could go down to State or Brothers and buy bottled water and do it. There's plenty of water available. It's just a matter of how much we want to pay for it." And so many people have been mistaken over this, and I know people even come to this council, you know, worried about, are we going to have enough water? There is enough water, it's just a matter of how much we're going to pay for it. And so I suggested, well, then let the market, let the free market solve that problem. When we use too much water and the price goes up, we'll use less water, and we'll figure out ways to solve our problems by the free market. I must add, though, however, because none of us in California have ever had our water turned off, it does go to show that water agencies have done a good job at planning ahead to keep us in a supply of water, and I got to give them a lot of credit for that. So there's the whole ocean of water out there, which we will not drain dry. If we need to start desalinating, we can do that, it's going to cost money, but there's plenty of water, just it's a matter of expense.
I've been worried about that all night. Pam?
Just a quick comment, follow-up on Floyd's. I agree with you, and a fascinating book I read a number of years ago, Cadillac Desert, and author points out, over 85% of the water in California goes for agriculture. If you literally, you know, took, you know, even 5% more out of the agricultural pool, you would increase the urban supply, you know, significantly, and we're already seeing that, so there's a lot of interesting issues. My other two quick points that I had, couldn't help but be struck tonight. We always talk about, you know, traffic on the freeways and regional issues, try and take trucks off during the daytime, get them to go at night. Then we talk about, and probably every other city does the same thing, we're restricting deliveries to our new commercial facilities there that they can't deliver between 10:00 at night and 7:00 in the morning. Can't help but be struck by those opposing ideas. And then the other immediate issue, the other day, I was driving down Anderson Street in front of the academy during school hours, seeing kids walking around, and I glanced at my speedometer, and I was going 35, and thinking, you know, I'm 10 miles over the 25 zone. There were probably five cars that sailed past me, at least 10 or 15 miles an hour faster than me. Could we look at some ways to, you know, maybe have, I know in some cities, they have flashing yellow lights when school's in session, and I think a lot of people just forget there's 25 mile an hour zone. So maybe JARB, I'm sure you've got plenty of good ideas, just a matter of how we'll fund them, but I really think we need some reminder, I know the sheriff's aware of it, but I like the idea somehow, some of those flashing yellow lights with the 25 mile an hour zone, because I'm shocked how fast people go through there during school time. I've seen one child hit in a crosswalk a number of years ago, and don't want to see that happen again.
I have a couple, Dusty, go ahead.
Well, my question on that is, I've always wondered this, is it when children are present or when they're in the school in the building? Outside? Okay, so it's not just school hour.
Okay. Two more items for me. Number one, I am having the mayor's breakfast, it's February 27, 7:00 AM, and I know several of you will be out of town, but February 27, 7:00 AM, and I'm having a variety of speakers like I did last time. The other is a letter that I received some time ago from a Mrs. Hinpel, basically congratulating the Public Works Department for timely service, and it's always nice to get a letter that is thanking city staff for good service, and we do have good staff, and I want to acknowledge this letter. Anything else to come before the council?
Couple comments. I believe this is Hector's last, no, one more after this? At any rate, Hector's been reassigned, he's decided to go on to bigger and better things, so...
I wasn't sure whether that was going to be mentioned yet or not, so since you brought it up. I saw Gary Penrod yesterday at noon, tells me that, and I don't understand how anything leaving Loma Linda is a promotion, but that he is being promoted. That doesn't sound like a promotion when you're leaving Loma Linda, Hector.
The last thing I wanted to mention was the, I don't know if council gets a chance to notice it, but you may have received, may hopefully, compliments on our broadcast quality. The picture and the sound is vastly improved due to the new equipment that we have installed.
Great.
Good.
Hector, where are you going?
I'm going to one of my classes.
Well, we appreciate your service to the city of Loma Linda, and we've enjoyed having you here in our city. Floyd?
I do have one other quick comment. You know, it wasn't, a few months ago, we received notice from FEMA that the flood map had been lifted on the north side of town, and we encouraged people to contact their lending agencies on their house where they had their mortgage to have this restriction removed, and they wouldn't have to pay for their flood insurance. Subsequently, I received a letter from my mortgage company, and in the letter, they said that they are required by law, mortgage companies are required by law to periodically check the FEMA maps, and if flood insurance is no longer required, they are required to notify the people who have mortgages. And my mortgage company notified me that I don't have to have flood insurance anymore. I didn't have to tell them, they said they have to do that. Now, I have already heard that other mortgage companies are resisting allowing people to get by without having to pay their flood insurance. My mortgage company says they're required by law to check this and tell us that.
How do they define periodically?
What was that?
How do they define periodically?
Yeah, I don't know what, periodically, but...
Well, let's mention it again, for the benefit of anybody listening, you no longer have to pay flood insurance in the city of Loma Linda. If you are paying it with your insurance payments or mortgage payments every month, call your insurance company or your mortgage company and advise them it's no longer necessary.
Yeah. What you need to do is you need to take this letter, is I get my flood insurance through my home insurer, take it to that person, and they are the ones, they'll have you sign a piece of paper, and they're the ones that can arrange taking this off.
Okay. Anything else to come before the council? We are adjourned.
We will reconvene the redevelopment agency. Any items to be added or deleted? Anyone from the public wishing to make a comment on any item not on the agenda, come forward. Seeing none, we have to go very quickly to the minutes of January 15, 2008. Is there a motion? Move? Second?
Second.
Okay. Any opposition? Seeing none, they're approved. We are adjourned.